Good evening and welcome to the ordinary meeting of council at six thirty P M. I'll start with an acknowledgement country. Lithgow City Council acknowledges the Radry elders past and present of the Radry nation, the original custodians of the land on which the Lithgow communities reside. The council also extends our respect to our neighbouring nation. Declaration of webcasting. I inform all those in attendance at this meeting that the meeting is being webcast and that those in attendance should refrain from making any diffamatory statements concerning any person, councillor or employee and refrain from discussing those matters subject to close council proceedings as indicated in clause fourteen point one of the code of meeting practice. I note that all councillors are present. Declarations of interest. Do we have any councillors?
Yeah, I may. I've prepared a declaration form. I have a conflict of interest, community interest in five point one confidential matter, strategic employment lens projects. I won't read it out what it is because it relates to something in the report which would give the report away, so I'm happy to hand it up to the staff.
Thank you, councillor Ticey. Do I have any further declaration of interest?
Um, I might have a small minor one to do with councillor Mahoney's one to do with, um, which one is it? To do with item two point three, as I live over in that area.
Okay. Would you like advice on that councillor Fredericks? Or are you right?
Um, I'm fine. It's just because I live in that area, I know the area.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. Any further declaration of interest? No? Thank you councillors. We've got three sets of minutes that need to be confirmed. The first set are confirmation of minutes of the ordinary meeting of council held the eighth of October. Councillor Statham, I understand you had an issue with these minutes, was that rectified? Would you like to move them councillor Statham? No, can I have a mover councillorie?
Yeah, happy to move it.
Happy and a seconder please. I'll second it. Thank you councillor Fredericks. If there's no opposition, I'll put that, all those in favour. Declare that carried. The second lot of minutes are confirmation of minutes of the ordinary meeting council held on the twenty eighth of October twenty twenty four. Do I have a mover?
No.
Thank you councillor Goodwin. Councillor Ring second. Do I have any opposition?
Um, I do have one issue. It was I who called for the division, not councillor Ticey.
Thank you councillor Fredericks. Can we have that noted please? What item? Thank you councillor Fredericks.
Uh, twenty four two O eight it is. It's on page ten of twenty eight.
Is that the only minor change? Have you got that?
Um, also on page nine, um, when councillor Ticey has called for the suspension of standing orders, I did second that. It says that no one did.
Thank you councillor Frederick. Have you got that as well? Yep, okay. If they're the only two changes, I'll put those minutes. All those in favour? All those against, declare those carried. The third lot of minutes, confirmation of minutes of the extraordinary meeting of council held on the twelfth of November.
Happy to move.
Thank you councillor Ring. Do I have a second of? Councillor Goodwin?
Happy to say.
Thank you. Do I have any opposition? No? I'll put that, all those in favour. Declare that carried. Commemorations and announcements. On behalf of the Lithgow City Council, the mayor expressed sympathy and condolences to the families who have lost loved ones since the last council meeting. Thank you. Public forum. I have several names registered. The first one is Mary Abbott, if you'd like to come to the lectern please.
Good evening. My name's Mary Abbott and I'm a resident of Lemnos Street and I'm here tonight to speak about the proposed Claraash subdivision. I'm opposed to the development. My greatest concern with this development is the management of the storm water from the site and the impact it will have upon the residents downstream. In the Lithgow flood plan risk management study of two thousand and twenty three, it clearly states that infill development in the headwaters of Sheedy's Gully, South Littleton, Littleton and Bowenfields has the potential to increase flow levels between twenty, between fifty and two hundred millimetres in a twenty percent A D P. Pushing additional water down into an already flood prone area cannot be a good thing. The study also says future urban development has the potential to increase rate and flow volume of runoff conveyed by various watercourses as well as increasing surcharge of local stormwater drainage systems. For example, piped drainage systems associated with urban subdivisions will result in significant changes to existing overland flow paths. The proposed subdivision does not use the current flood plan management plan and many of the studies used in the D A are out of date. I'm also concerned about the traffic flow down Lemnos Street. It is a very narrow street and it is already difficult to navigate when people park their cars in front of their homes. The intersection at Maringa, Rabaul Street and Amian Streets are also very dangerous. They have very poor visibility. Children going to school in the mornings at Lassell and children catching the bus also cross this road in the mornings, which in the D A states that those are the most, those are the busiest times of the day when traffic will come down Lemnos Street. There are fifty four homes proposed for the subdivision. That's fifty four cars, but we all know more than one person drives a car in any family and it doesn't take into account the people who live in Strathline who will use that road because it's easier than trying to get out onto the highway. The sub, the D A does not address soil erosion and I believe that this subdivision really needs to be looked at very carefully and council needs to ask the developer to submit new plans using the most up to date information possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Abbott. Um, the general manager will make a statement if that's okay?
Uh, through you ma'am. Ju- just to note, the development application has been called in. It's not being put for determination by council tonight. It has been called in by councillor, um, for councils, uh, for notification to councillor at this meeting.
Thank you, general manager. Um, number two on the list is Martin Smith. He's not with us? No? Okay. Uh, Steve and Linda McCulloch, if you'd like to come forward.
Good evening. Uh, I'm speaking on motion two, the item two point one. My name is Steve McCulloch and this is my wife Linda. We live near S Bank siding on In Street. We both have professional backgrounds working in industrial standards and compliance audits in the field of aircraft engineering and healthcare. We moved into In Street in two thousand and fifteen, knowing fully well we purchased a home beside the main Western Rail Corridor. Until the end of two thousand and nineteen, our quality of life was excellent. As residents, we found activities of the rail corridor not to be disruptive. At the end of two thousand and nineteen, things changed dramatically. Heavy diesel engines began idling beside less than twenty five metres from our home while teams conducted maintenance, which we continue to witness to this day. We are speaking today because we are deeply concerned about the air, water and noise pollution impacting us and all residents surrounding S Bank siding. We are, we are subjected to high level of diesel emissions and can literally taste diesel in the air. That means we and other residents in the area are breathing diesel fumes for up to eight hours a day. We also, there is also window rattling, bone jarring painful noise now more frequently after hours. There has been refuelling, washing of diesel engines without mitigation systems that would be at a D A approved shed. We discovered this, we discovered this came about in two thousand and nineteen due to the closure of the branch line leading to the D A approved diesel maintenance shed lot ten situated in State Mine Park. We have recently learned that the licence for the S Bank siding will be transferred to the S S R from Lithgow State Mile Railway C O C Holdings. We are very worried regarding the future planned use of the siding and the impacts on the residents of this community. We have lodged complaints to all parties, state, council and environmental via the required complaint management process over the last four years. We have received no meaningful answers or responses to our request to see evidence that diesel maintenance has been carried out in this yard safe for the surrounding residents. We know that a noise test was conducted in our yard in two thousand and twenty two over two weeks and it failed to meet code. It is not our intention to stop activities at S Bank siding. We want to preserve local jobs. However, there must be common ground to reduce negative impact on residents. We want to see heavy diesel maintenance move back to the approved shed at State Mine Park or another approved maintenance shed with safety and waste mitigation systems. As a rate payer and residents of this town, we ask council that to organise and supply an environmental impact study to determine if the current activities within S Bank siding meet and continue to meet.
Thank you councillor Statham. Thank you councillor Goodwin. I'll put it to you, all those in favour. Declare that carried.
Okay. Okay. Organise and supply an environmental impact study to determine if the current activities near S Bank siding meet and continue to meet environmental and industrial standards. Thank you for your time. Uh, we have detailed documentation of all the history of this issue if anyone has any further questions. Evening.
Thank you. The next person on our li- list, sorry, is Mr Rob White. Would you please come forward to the lectern? Thank you.
Good evening everyone. Uh, my name is Rob White, speaking on behalf of the Concerned Lithgow Community Group Inc. Firstly, I'd like to congratulate all the councillors that are in the room that have been elected or re-elected. It's good to see you here. The reason that I'm here tonight speaking is at the last ordinary council meeting on the October the twenty eighth, an accusation was made regarding the action of a third party campaigner and the partial funding of four councillors' election campaigns. Although this statement was ruled as not out of order at the time, nevertheless, it was an inaccurate statement made in a public forum by publicly elected officials. Clearly the C L C group was the group referred to in that matter. As a community group composed of community members only, we should not have to defend our right to be involved in election campaigns. We live in a democracy where any individual or any group can be involved in any election campaign in any manner that they wish that's within the legal limits. I want to remind all of the councillors here that every one of you was involved in a group. There were no ungrouped councillors voted in and that by default means that every councillor here had a group supporting them. I struggle to understand on this basis why anyone would have an objection to a community group being involved in an election campaign. Our groups supported the concept of below the line voting, which was not necessarily consistent with what others advocated. To support this approach, we developed a how to vote card and placed it in every letterbox that we could in my Lithgow L G A and that how to vote card listed every candidate that was on there. It was a direct replica of the ballot sheet, so no one was excluded. Whilst we did indicate our preferred candidates, we did not exclude anyone else. So it was not an exclusive information sheet. Every one of you received below the line votes. Some of you caught a large number of votes and you would have actually benefited as a direct result of the information that we gave to the community prior to the election so that they could make those choices. In contrast, and this is not a criticism, uh, every one, not every one of you, some of you promoted how to vote cards that solely looked after your own groups. So on that basis, I think we can claim a fair degree of independence. It is worth noting that.
Can I ask for an extension?
Yeah.
Councillor Mahoney? Councillor Smith? I'll put it to you, all those in favour. Declare that carried. Continue on, Mr Smith.
It is worth noting that the Lithgow council achieved the highest rate of below the line voting in New South Wales and on that basis I believe that it was quite a successful campaign. For the record, I would like to make three points. The Concerned Lithgow Community Group did not contribute a single cent to any individual or any group other than our own campaign. As a registered third party candidate, that information of our expenditure has been supplied to the electoral commission and presumably will in due course be published on the website. Point two is as community members, we are perfectly entitled to campaign for whomever we want without the post-election attack, attack by anyone that was elected on the way that we pursued that. And thirdly, I'd like to say this. The C L C group lost four of the members that we did support or elected. Five of you were not members that we supported. However, we are extremely happy with the eclectic mix of councillors that have been voted in and we believe that this is the basis of a very good council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Smith. If there's anybody else who wishes to speak on the business papers now, please come forward.
Good evening ma'am, councillors and senior staff. My name is Philip Peace. I am the applicant and owner of agenda three one eight in your business report tonight. Um, it's the shed refusal at one A Caroline Avenue, Owen Fields. Before I'm, I'm after, before making any formal determination tonight, I would like to invite the mayor and the councillors, um, to visit my property and poss- possibly before Christmas, possibly, and have an onsite inspection of my property so you can see what I'm proposing. Um, as noted in the report before you tonight, there are no written submissions received against my D A, D A at all during the notification period. However, there was in fact a petition supporting by nearby neighbours endorsed by twelve other signatures. I would like to be, I would be more than happy to invite all my neighbours to this meeting, um, to come along for the inspection onsite. Um, my thanks to you all and I look forward to the onsite visit if approved.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on the agenda tonight? No? Okay, we'll move on. Uh, merrill minute, I have one merrill minute, so I'll put that forward. From the thirteenth to the fifteenth of November twenty twenty four, the general manager and I attended the following meetings in Sydney. The thirteenth of November, the Central New South Wales Joint Organisation and Board Meeting, a delegates report will be provided at that January ordinary meeting. Fourteenth of November, uh, the joint organisation, we met with the ministers at New South Wales Parliament. On the fifteenth of November, we attended the Country Mayors Association Annual General Meeting. On the fifteenth of November, we individually met with the Honorable Joe Haylen, M P, Minister for Transport and the Honourable Courtney Hustoff, Minister for Finance and Natural Resources. On the Thursday, we met with senior New South Wales Government Representatives, which was hosted by Phil Donato, the Member of Orange. The issues I raised were as following. Firstly, with the Honourable Chris Means, Premier of New South Wales. I spoke to the premier about removing Lithgow from waste to energy. I, I spoke to the premier about removing Lithgow from the Waste to Energy Precinct. The community had made it very clear that they are not interested in hosting this project. I raised that the Lithgow local government area had lost five million dollars each year due to the acting of the Resource for Regions Programme. Lithgow needs assistance with sporting the jobs of the future and the council needs to be directed to another stream of funding. I met with Jenny Aginson, the Minister for Regional Roads and Transport, Regional Transport and Roads, Roads. I raised the issue of the Wogan Valley Road reconstruction. We have over a hundred citizens that need certainty. I also advocated for a road over the mountains that need, and that needs to be a priority, especially with the future Western Airport, Sydney Airport. The Bell's Line Expressway needs to be revisited. Both the federal and the state government need to be bold. We then spoke. Then I raised with General Mooki, the Treasurer, the issue regarding a proposed new fire station and the issue of contamination, P F A S, which was raised by the Fire Brigade Employees Union. Fire and Rescue New South Wales have confirmed that further funds allocated to the project would solve the problem. The community still needs and wants a new fire station in Lithgow. I then raised with the Honourable Stephen Lawrence, M L C, the issue of the future of the Lithgow Small Arms Factory Museum. At the eighth of October twenty twenty four ordinary meeting, council resolved to seek clarification from Talis and the Lithgow Small Arms Museum Executive on the delays in approving essential maintenance work. It is understood that a heritage order was requested in October twenty twenty four by the heritage professional Bronwyn Hannah. I then raised with the Honourable Rose Jackson, M L C, Minister for Water Housing and Mental Health, the issue of a number of vacant public housing dwellings that need attention. The public housing shortage in Lithgow is a serious concern. I also raised the issue of maintenance backlog for the public housing. I spoke to the importance of responding to emergency maintenances, maintenance in a timely manner and the associated difficulties for local residents. The Honourable Ryan Park, Minister for Health, I invited the minister to visit Lithgow local government area and with the Honourable Geab Dib, Minister for Emerging Services, I raised the Fire and Rescue New South Wales Station funding shortfall again. On Friday, the fifteenth of November, the general manager and I met with Joe Haylen, the Honourable Joe Haylen, Minister for Transport and the Honourable Courtney Hustoff, M L C, Minister for Finance and Natural Resources. The matters raised with Minister Haylen included the needs for improvement to rail services across the central west. The minister suggested that the council write to the premier and treasurer, treasurer to advocate for the, for an uplift to an hourly service, seven days a week, uh, seven day a week train service to Lithgow, particularly following the Premier's directive for the New South Wales Public Servants to return to their office. Improved road access to the central west. I spoke to, spoke of the access to the central west by roads being significantly constrained. Council is asking the New South Wales Government to fund improvements to the Great Western Highway along the Bell's Line of Road Expressway. Lithgow locomotive workshop, I discussed the potential uses of the locomotive workshop for rail manufacturing by Lithgow based rail businesses and all maintenance support for regional passenger train services. I advocated for the New South Wales Government to take ownership of the site. I also raised unlocking the Merengaru Growth Precinct. The task of the New South Wales Government is to support Lithgow residential industrial growth by either removing the controlled access road designated for the Great Western Highway through Merengaru or committing to the subsidy of a grade separate interchange, approximately two hundred million, to otherwise render this land economic for future access and development. I discussed the Lithgow local government areas economic transition with the Minister Hustoff. The minister provided an update on consultation on the Future Jobs and Investment Authorities issued paper. The minister suggested that the council write to the federal government to seek two million contribution from the Net Zero Economy Authority towards four point two million required annually to implement the LEAP action plan if successful. The New South Wales Government would consider contribution of the balance required. The minister also provided other avenues for advocacy efforts. I also asked the New South Wales Government to make the royalties for regions fund available for priority projects and programs into the future. My recommendation is that council note the advocacy undertaken by myself and the general manager in Sydney from the thirteenth to the fifteenth of November twenty twenty four, write to the premier and treasurer to advocate for an uplift to an hourly seven days a week train service to Lithgow as suggested by the Honourable Joe Haylen, Minister for Transport, write to the federal government to seek two million contribution from Net Zero Economy Authority towards four point two million required annually to implement the LEAP action plan as suggested by the Honourable Courtney Hustoff, Minister for Finance and Natural Resources. I put that to the council. Is there any debate? Yes councillorie?
Uh, Mayor Tomlin.
Mayor Tomlin, I'd like to have a move on amendment. I read two points, if you're happy to add them.
Happy to do so. What are your two points? Depending on what your points are, sorry councillor ring.
Um, point four, these relate to your meeting with Senator Stephen Lawrence. For rights to the Honourable Penny Sharp, MLC, Minister for Heritage, in support of the application for state heritage listing by Dr Ronwen Hannah. Point five, that the mayor is authorized to advocate for the retention of the Small Arms Factory Museum in situ and for its state heritage listing with both state and federal parliament.
I have no problem with those. Is there any further debate on that?
No, there's no debate. I just wanted to know whether the, given the fact that with the last meeting and before all these meetings, whether you spoke to the premier or the minister, or the relevant minister in regards to the Pumped Hydro project.
I haven't at this stage, no councillor Tysus, but I will do so once the council directs me how they wish to converse with the minister. We will have other opportunities going forward. So I'm happy to go forward to that, if you would like to provide a suggestion on how we do that. Sure, that's fine. Yes, councillor Evangelitis?
Regarding the Waste to Energy, do we also need to draft some sort of letter rather than just a mention? I mean, is that something that we can do also?
Yeah, would you like to include that in the meryl minute?
Yeah.
Yep. So you'd like to put in another point that we draft a letter to Penny Sharp, I'm assuming that would be, is that what you'd like? Yep.
Yeah, great.
You do that?
Thank you.
So if we include that, have you got that? A letter to be sent or draft councillor Evangelitis? Do you want the letter to be sent on to?
Yes, please.
A letter to be sent to, it'd be.
The relative minister.
The relative ministers in regards to.
Our opposition.
Our opposition to the Waste Consideration.
And to be removed of the precinct.
Yep. Got that? If I have no further debate, I'll put that. All those in favor? Oh, sorry, you foreshadowed. Sorry, councillor Fredericks, sorry.
I'm not a debate or anything, but I would like to say thank you for advocating for the residents in facts that are having to wait for maintenance issues and that to be rectified and the fact that there's so many buildings that have been boarded up for over six months. Thank you on behalf of them for advocating for them.
Oh, that's very kind of you. Thank you councillor Fredericks for those kind words. If there's no further debate, I'll put that. All those in favor? All those against, I'll declare that carried. Councillor Tysus, you said you had something foreshadowed?
Yes, I've emailed it to Trinity up there as well. The motion is that the Premier Chris Means and Minister for Planning and Public Places, Paul Scully, be formally advised that the Lithgow City Council on the twenty eighth of October twenty twenty four resolved on a vote of eight to one that quote, Lithgow City Council oppose any pumped hydro project facilities within our local government area. And I'll move that recommendation.
Is there a seconder?
I will second that.
Councillor Fredericks, would you like to speak, councillor Fredericks?
It's something that we've already voted on. It was eight to one. The intention's pretty clear of where this council wants to head with that.
Thank you councillor Fredericks. Do I have any further debate on that issue? I'll put the motion, all those in favor? All those against, declare that carried.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item two point one, which is councillor Marnie. Councillor Marnie, would you like to read out your, I'll hand it over to you. You can read out your recommendation and then you can start with your commentary.
Thank you, mayor. First up, I would like to change the recommendation slightly for the motion. If I could breathe that out.
Yes, it's your recommendation.
To the staff, so hopefully it's come across as I intended. They were trying to decipher some of my handwritten notes. The council will take immediate actions to understand ownership of the land and if any development applications are currently in place to ensure that all rail yard operators are complying with transport authorities' regulations and relevant New South Wales state environmental legislations for the maintenance activities currently being undertaken in Exbank Rail Yard.
Before you move forward, sorry councillor Marnie, is there a seconder? Councillor Ring? Yep, okay. Sorry councillor Marnie, back to you.
Thank you. An overarching statement before I move into the intent of the motion is the rail industry in the Lithgow Valley has a long history here. It has a very considerable future. It also diverts into what's an emerging industry which has been going for some time, which is is rail tourism. What this motion looks to do is start to investigate that larger puzzle of how that all comes together in the Lithgow Valley. So I'm saying this with some, without too much prejudice involved, but I do feel that we need to ensure that our, our systems are correct. So what I'm asking, I know that speakers and I think Mr and Mrs McCulloch were coming in and speaking. They spoke to some of the operating conditions. We just want to ensure that those rail works are occurring wherever possible in the right location. There may be initially some constraints to that in the linking rail to State Mine Gully, State Mine Museum, sorry. That may be an opportunity for some enabling funding that may perhaps break that, that barrier. Also, that whether in future consideration of where different rail industry activities occur, I think these are some principles that need to underpin it. I'm not saying that I've got a complete understanding. That's why I'm asking for the staff to, to investigate this and ensure that all those, those right parts are in place as far as DA's operating standards and meeting of the various requirements. So I'll, I'm happy to leave it at that.
Thank you councillor Marnie. Councillor Ring?
Yeah, I have to, I have to admit that my first read just confused me completely. I really didn't know where councillor Marnie was coming from. We had a discussion on the way home last Friday. I advised him of that. I think it was today we all got an email from a group explaining what the issues are. And then discussion on the advice from Mr and Mrs McCulloch tonight puts it in the context. It's very, I'm glad councillor Marnie has made the amendments because in order for council to take any action, we have to ensure it's on land that we can actually legally take action. Council needs to sort that out first and then determine if and what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ring. Any further debate on this matter? Any opposition councillor Evangelitis? You were though, no further opposition?
Put the motion.
I'll put it. Okay. All those in favor? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you.
Mayor, could I move a procedural motion to bring forward three seventeen and three eighteen in the agenda, which were members of the public who spoke at the public gallery? One was the Clare Dash subdivision and the other was the shared refusal. And I'll move, if I may, if that's accepted.
That's fine.
Happy to move three seventeen.
Yeah, that's fine. So councillor Tysus, you're moving that councillor. Just me, you don't need a seconder, so. What did you, councillor Marnie, are you okay?
Sorry, I just wanted to, something of councillor Tysus. We have got people in tonight for two point two. They haven't spoken to it. But I, I endorse what you're, you're doing, but can we? Two point two and then I'm very happy. Yeah, and then, then hold two point three for later and bring the other.
Okay, so if we go back to two point two and then councillor Tysus, you're moving three seventeen and three eighteen. So that's a procedural motion. I'll put that. All those in favor? All those against, declare that carried. Okay, but we'll go back to councillor Marnie, who's two point two, because you've got people in the audience. So can you please read out your recommendation and then with your commentary?
The council utilizes sections of the Local Government Act and put in, put on public exhibition for twenty eight days. Council's intention to provide support to modify historic joint sewer systems to bring systems in line with the Local Government Regulation Clause one six two, which requires a direct connection from each individual property to the council main. And secondly, the funds from the Sewer and Water Fund be used to support landholders to complete works to modernise historic joint sewer systems.
Is there a seconder for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Councillor Smith, would you like to speak?
I think once we start looking into this problem, I think it's going to create a fairly complex situation.
Oh, sorry, I apologize. Back to councillor Marnie. My apologies. Thank you councillor Tysus.
I won't read the report back to people verbatim, but just to summarize a key issue that we do have an aging and failing urban sewer system. What is becoming apparent is that we have a number of legacy issues that are going to be a challenge for us as a council and also the community. And one of these, which I've been approached by a number of both residents and also property owners, were working under an assumption, perhaps perceived or actual, that these systems were historic public assets, I'll call them. The act does talk to the situations under section fifty nine point eight, fifty nine A, where council will build infrastructure on private land. I actually have two items on a property I own. One is the sewer main for the entire neighbourhood. And the second appears to be a very similar establishment to this. So there is a pathway that that can happen. What I'm looking for is that we, we look at whether these are legacy issues that were perhaps established, because we're not talking about strata title. We're talking about six or seven individual properties that have a joint main running down through the backs of their property, which then exits at a point into the council main. Now, the challenges, given that we've only recently identified under clause one six two, that council is not required to manage these. And in fact, people are now required to manage them as individuals. This creates a problem of how do we sequence that work as a system? I'm just suggesting there's a challenge that sits there that properties number three and number five determine that they are going to meet the requirements of one six two. And they then proceed to disconnect themselves from the joint main and put a connection to the sewer main. What happens to the sewerages discharging from properties one and two? What happens if people have financial problems of participating at this point? So I'm looking at whether there's an opportunity for us as a council as we move through this renewal program, which I applaud the staff for what they're doing and applaud the staff for their attempts to normalize our sewerage system. That we need to work with these landholders to get a systematic approach to how we resolve this issue. Whether that acts in a potential incentive, which is permitted under clause sixty seven of the Local Government Act, as long as it is clearly within a program or or it's put out the public exhibition for twenty eight days to identify that public money will be used on private lands. Most of the subdivisions where this falls in were constructed in the early nineteen hundreds. So we're looking at things that are happening during the federation period. Lots of terracotta piping, a lot of that is failing. We've got the advent of the non-disposable disposable wipes, which in constrained sewer systems, I hope the pleasure in working environments where complete sewer systems domains will over top. And it's largely driven by the non-disposable disposable wipes. They're an unfortunate blight on our sewerage systems at the moment. So just given that I feel this, these are systems based approach to resolving it, I feel council is the best placed party to support that. I'm not sure what the funding should be. It has been suggested to me today that perhaps this is brought to the operations committee so that we can look at this in, in conjunction with the Sewer Reflux Valves Initiative and look at how we fairly transition from sewage systems that are decades old and have been failing for the last few decades, how we, how we navigate our pathway through that. So I'll, I'll put that motion in front of the councillors.
Thank you councillor Marnie. Councillor Smith, you second the notice of motion?
I think Eric's fairly well covered the whole issue, but I think this is a problem that we're going to find in the future that's going to come back and really bite us. Because this sort of problem exists over, over the whole town. I've, I've come across this a couple of times. So I think we've got to get the right system done in the right way first up. Because there might be a lot of people out there that are going to need a lot of help to get through this. So, but I support Eric exactly.
Thank you councillor Smith. Do I have any further debate? Councillor Ring? And then I'll go to councillor.
I'd actually like to move an amendment.
Your amendment councillor Ring?
Councillor Marnie's already alluded to it. It does not appear to be obvious who was speaking to him. That the management of historic joint sewers systems is referred to the operations or equivalent committee for review and the development of a position statement on how the issue can be addressed moving forward.
Is there a seconder?
I'm just wondering whether councillor Marnie's quite happy to accept.
You're happy to accept that?
Thank you councillor Tysus. Look, I am, but understanding there is a time criticality to this, given that we've only recently stepped out of an assumed responsibility for maintenance of these systems. And now it's falling into the private. So just as long as we have a considered pathway to navigate that, that period, I'm very supportive of what councillor Ring has spoken to it. It reflects on also what councillor Smith has said, that we need a robust system going forward because it isn't the first time we're going to come across this.
So I take that that you're accepting that councillor Marnie? Yes, okay.
Yes.
If I could speak to it?
Yes, councillor Ring.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with councillor Smith. The same with the reflux valves. We don't know how many are out there. What's the cost? What's the impact on council? What are the urgent ones that need to be done? And what are the funding opportunities moving forward? The legislation was changed some time ago from advice I received, possibly back to nineteen ninety nine. But as a council, once legislative changes enacted, that may materially impact on council's operations or on our residents, council should be notified through a formal report. I think moving forward, that, that's very critical. And that highlights this problem, that changes have come through. All of a sudden, we've caught up with it. The community have a different expectation. We've still got a very finite pearl of money. You can go down the path of all the others, X, Y, Z, but we have a responsibility in our community to do the right thing. And that could be by throwing money at it, could be by actually undertaking the works and putting that on to the service charges over a period of time. There are a number of options that could be done to minimize the financial impact on council and residents. And I think we need to look at it. I, I agree with councillor Marnie. It needs to be done sooner rather than later, so not dragging on. So I'd like, as soon as we have those committees done, something that could come back to probably the March or April meeting and then be incorporated into the twenty five, twenty six financial budget.
Thank you councillor Ring. Any further debate on this topic?
Can I ask through you, Mayor? In trap, how the residents would be affected if he powers that off? So that's, that's a, that's about a thought.
Mr Trap, are you able to respond, please?
Through you, Mayor. Wouldn't have a figure off the top of my head. We know of some older areas or some areas that we know that it's been commonplace for those to be installed that way. Some have moved away from it. There's a sort of attrition over the years and there's plumbing work's been done. But yeah, we would have to do a fair, a fair amount of work to find out exactly who's on those sort of systems before we could, yeah, come up with a number.
So it wouldn't be an influx of people immediately wanting to change their sewer system? So, so it wouldn't be an influx of people immediately wanting to change their sewer system immediately? So that would be my problem.
I can't imagine so.
Thank you councillor Goodwin. Does that satisfy your question? Councillor Evangelitis, did you have something?
Oh, I know about this firsthand because recently, it looks like I just scraped in timing wise, we had a problem, um, at our house with the sewer. And when they dug down, they must have dug, you know, eight, nine feet. Um, it was the original sewer pipe from over a hundred years ago. And the guys were fantastic. They spent four days there, um, did an amazing job. And I'd hate to think that anyone who just purchased a property with things that would have to foot a bill for something like that, would be talking in tens of thousands of dollars. Um, sewer, I think is something, everyone understands their own plumbing, you know, needs and, you know, old houses, fine. But I really think sewer should be the council's domain, even though we don't have to. I agree with councillor Ring, there should be some provision where we can all chip in, um, as they arrive. I mean, that was the first problem with the sewer on that pipe for a hundred and ten years. So, um, you know, I've been there four years, so we didn't have a problem until that point. So it's a long period of time. Um, it's not all going to come at once. But I really don't believe that, you know, people should be footing that bill.
Thank you councillor Evangelitis. If I don't have any further debate, I'll put the, the motions up. councillor Marnie, would you like to read what the recommendation is now on your screen?
Yeah, sure.
On which it's been changed, so.
Thank you. Uh, that the management of historic joint sewer systems is referred to the operations or equivalent committee for review and the development of a position to statement on how the issue can be addressed moving forward.
Thank you. I'll put that, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Now we're moving to three seventeen, is that correct?
That's correct mayor. You know, if I can move the administration's recommendation with a point four, which I've provided to the staff, the secretary. And that is that prior to a report on the final assessment and recommendation being furnished to council on DA one, two, three slash twenty four, the planning and development department provide an urgent report to council on the possibility of there being traffic access into and out of the Strathlone Estate onto the Great Western Highway at the current intersection of Lithgow Hospital, Colru Drive, South Ballenfels. I'll move that recommendation.
Thank you councillor Tysus. Do I have a second of councillor Ring?
I'd like to second it, but I'd also like to move an amendment to point two, if councillor Tysus is happy. Um, that is that point two to read that an onsite meeting will be organised to staff, councillors and residents.
Are you happy with that councillor Tysus? So you're happy with that? That's great. So if you'd like to speak to it councillor Tysus?
Uh, yes, I would. Look, it's, um, it's, it's only, it's, it's only a DO that's been called in. This will come back as a full report with the information of the members of the gallery here tonight and the residents. Um, I'm just looking forward to a, uh, some sort of an assessment. Uh, quite clearly, when this comes up, this is going to be a major option for going back through the old, the older states, down, uh, all those other streets that were mentioned earlier. And, uh, but it's always been planned that this would come through the Wirrawaya State anyway. But there is, there is an avenue over there at, um, at the hospital. And it was envisioned many, many years ago where, uh, when the hospital was built, there would possibly be another exit onto the highway. Um, if you look at it now, there, there's a possibility that, let's see, that a couple of properties that may be able to be purchased by government, as in state government grant or federal grant. And to put that on there, that's, I mean, that's a, I'm not forcing the residents out or anything like that. I'm not asking the developer to even fit the bill, because I don't think it's their responsibility to have an exit. But I think somewhere along this council needs to have a plan to get people out of Strathlone Estate. Uh, there's only been one entry the whole time for what nearly thirty years. Uh, and we've had a couple of accidents there where they've had, I think at some stage, I think there was one incident from memory where there's about twelve or fourteen hours where they couldn't get out of the estate because of an accident on the highway, some, uh, a serious accident of some sort that required some sort of crash investigation from memory. Um, so I think it's, uh, we need to have the possibility that, um, even if we do approve this subdivision, that, uh, we are addressing the traffic issues going forward. And, uh, whether that then intersection, I think the RMS at one stage from a traffic committee many years ago was looking at either traffic lights or a large roundabout at the hospital intersection, which would solve some of those problems that exist now where people are trying to turn into the hospital coming from the town area. So that's the reason for the, uh, if we can get some sort of, um, assessment moving forward that, um, we'll be able to allay the fears of the residents, uh, moving forward in the, uh, in the older state. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tysus. councillor Ring?
Uh, the reason I called this in in the first place was because of stormwater issues. And because of the potential for a rat run uh, from South Ballenfels to South Littleton, which would be disastrous for the residents in South Littleton. People running, driving their vehicles through, avoid going out on the, the highway. Um, I'm aware of the property that councillor Tysus was talking. Council in the past has made statements about, we're going to have a road through it. And the owners have told me, oh, we've seen plans, we've shown plans. They have no intention of selling at any stage. There's been a lot of pressure put on them. Um, I think that's an issue that can be discussed within the whole, um, development application and transport planning. Accessing and out is responsibility of the developer. It's not our responsibility. Um, there are issues there, they need to be addressed. Um, and the community needs to know that their voice is going to be heard. There's a lot of concern with residents who have been ignored in the past with issues they've raised in relation to developments related to this. They need to be heard when they do act on their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ring. Before I hand you over further debate, Mister Edgum wanted to make a comment.
Thank you mayor Coleman. Just a brief statement in response to councillor Tysus's comment. The proposed traffic lights at the intersection of Colru Drive are still on the cards. Transport for New South Wales are still talking about those, they just haven't been funded yet. Um, and without additional development, there's not really the need yet. But Transport is aware of the future for potential infill development around that precinct. So those traffic lights are still proposed, along with a traffic flow change at the intersection of, uh, James O'Donnell, which would be a left in, left out. But one wouldn't happen without the other. So there would need to be that point of interconnection between Hillcrest and the adjacent estate, traffic lights at Colru Drive, and then James O'Donnell would get a traffic light change as well.
Thank you, Mister Edgum. Any further debate on this topic?
Can I just get a?
Councillor Marnie?
Just a point of clarification. We're talking to, we've got item three point one seven up in front of us.
Yeah, that's what we're speaking.
Yeah, okay, okay. I'm just.
Did you want to speak to that?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Um, okay. The, the issues, um, that are rightly raised by both councillor Tysus and councillor Ring, the accumulation of traffic into these currently, as they're called technically in some of our reports, unsignalled intersections, essentially intersections without traffic lights, um, is going to be an issue for a number of developments in that locality. And, um, we need to be having more conversations with Transport for New South Wales for them to review pretty much all the intersections from Magpie Hollow through till, um, pretty much where you get to the old BP. All of those intersections have got significant issues in my mind. Um, so I am very happy to support the comments that were made by the two previous speakers on that matter.
Thank you councillor Marnie. Any further debate on this topic? Well, on this often? No? I'll put it to you. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. I understand the next one was three eighteen, is that correct?
That's correct.
I'd like to move that amendment if I may, mayor Coleman.
Okay, uh, certainly councillor Ring. What are you moving?
Um, for the benefit of staff, I will talk slow. Um, typing it, um.
Can I, can I just advise that I have, uh, provided the staff with a, a motion that council organise an onsite visit for councillors, council officers, the applicant and residents?
Oh, I'm happy.
Are you happy with that?
That's exactly.
Exactly the same thing?
Yep.
Alright, so you're happy with that?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, so councillor Ring, if you're moving that and councillor Tysus, you're going to second that. Councillor Ring, I'll come back to you if you'd like to speak.
Look, having an onsite meeting, we've got a number of new councillors, planning issues are difficult. We need to be careful that where staff refuse a development application, we're not setting a precedent um, by allowing onsite meetings. But I think in this case, there, there is value in having an onsite meeting and looking at it, getting a better understanding of the process. It doesn't mean that when it comes back to council in January, that the recommendation may change. But I think it's an opportunity for the owner to talk to councillors, for councillors to get a good understanding of the reasons, uh, that have been put forward by the council staff in refusing it. And if a compromise can be made, fantastic. But if not, that it shouldn't be seen as a precedent moving forward.
Thank you councillor Ring. councillor Tysus? You're happy with that? Any further debate? Councillor Evangelitis?
Yeah, I, I went out to the, um, address today and, um, had a look at everything. Um, I'm, I'm glad the owner spoke tonight because, um, I wasn't aware of the, um, no negative submissions and positive submissions. So, yeah, I'll definitely endorse the site visit, um, so we can have a good look.
Thank you councillor Evangelitis. If I have any further debate on this topic? No? Alright, I'll put it to you. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We'll go back. Oh, sorry, I need to hold a division. Thank you, general manager for reminding me of that. So we need a division because it's a planning issue, so.
Uh, is, is that a, is that a division? Because we're not.
We're not making a decision.
We didn't make a decision.
No, we've moved it. I don't think it needs one. We'll just move on.
There's no division.
No, there's no division. Thank you councillor Tysus. We'll move on. So point, two point three, we're going back to councillor Marnie. Can you please read your recommendation, point, two point three, and then your commentary?
Okay, thank you. Um, the council contact Transport for New South Wales and Housing New South Wales to confirm that maintenance schedules are appropriately designed, that are appropriately designed are in place and implemented, ensuring the consistent upkeep of landscaping within the Great Western Highway Corridor and Amora Park. Uh, that specific attention be given to these maintenance work in preparation for the school holiday period, that ongoing assessments be conducted to review the effectiveness of these maintenance schedules, ensuring they meet community standards and adapt to seasonal and usage patterns. And that a report, and that report back to the operations committee, the maintenance plans and schedules, providing, provided outlining actions and, uh, something else. So it just went off the screen there.
That's alright.
That's okay. Uh, to be taken by the relevant, relevant state government departments.
Thank you. Is there a second of? I'll second the motion. Thank you councillor Fredericks. Come back to you councillor Marnie with your commentary.
Uh, thank you. Uh, it's a, it's a two sided, uh, issue. Before I go into it, I just want to acknowledge that it, it isn't a new issue. And I, I want to acknowledge previous councillors. I, I know that councillor Goodsell no longer a councillor with us, but, um, raised issues on this. I also want to acknowledge councillor Statham, who put considerable time into talking to these issues in the previous term. So I, I recognise and also recognise that staff have worked with the, the various departments. The principle going into a new council term is that all public spaces should be managed equally. So no matter where they lie in the landscape and no matter which public authority manages them, they should be all managed to a community standard. We spoke about the importance of safety for families and children. This is where some of this, the, the rubber hits the road as far as making our spaces that we invite people to come into as safe and, um, it's clean and aesthetically appealing. Um, I'm very firm on this platform and I appreciate, um, councillor Fredericks' support for this. Um, the highway is a slightly different, uh, issue. This, this is, uh, about how the, how the front door presents to our visitors. So this is an important strip of highway. Um, it creates a significant high risk pathway for workers to work in. So I acknowledge and I thank the, um, councillor, uh, the council staff's comments that a large percentage of the funds put in are required to be used for traffic control. Um, I would like to see Transport for New South Wales managing this. Um, with specialised contractors as they carry the equipment, the trucks that can bring speeds safely down to forty kilometres in a highway corridor. Um, I'd like to see our council staff largely more focused on our assets and feeling comfortable that other public agencies' assets are kept to the same standard. Um, I know there's been comments in regard to, uh, Department of Housing, uh, public open space, that there's difficulties with gaining contractors. Um, could I suggest there's maybe a pathway forward? The council talks about negotiating a contract with Department of Housing and delivers it internally to them if we're unable to get a private sector contractor. Uh, but I don't believe that we should have communities that getting their parks maintained every, I understand, three times a year. I'm trying to work out the, the pattern. Uh, but anything sitting outside thirty days is completely unacceptable in a municipal park, I would suggest. Um, so if, if they're unable to supply it themselves, perhaps, um, we could supply it under contract to them. Um, so again, I thank all the previous councillors and the, and the directors who put time into these relationships and bringing this forward. I think what this motion's doing is just making a statement on behalf of the incoming council that, that we want to see the standard lifted. The benchmark is not something we trip over, rather than we actually reach for than what we've got currently. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Marnie. councillor Fredericks?
Alright, um, I was a bit nervous with this coming forward because every time someone mentions Amora Park or a FACS resident posts the fields out front of their houses overgrown, the comments get really quite nasty, you know, houses, get off your butt, go mow it, that kind of thing. When it's an area where not very many people are able to even afford a mower. Um, it's a fight that I have with FACS every year to do with the one that's out the front of my place. It's come to the point where me and my mum can mow four or five strips of the field because I went in and spoke to FACS. They are having trouble getting contractors that meet their budget and are also willing to risk their equipment, et cetera, from stuff that gets thrown into the fields and stuff. Again, can't completely fault them because it's a budget that's given to them. But councillor Mahoney's idea of possibly seeking a contract from them for us to maintain it might be the better alternative. And it might make the area feel a little bit better and the residents over there feel a little bit better too.
Thank you councillor Fredericks. Any further debate on this topic? Councillor Statham?
Um, thank you councillor Marnie for recognising that the previous council did a lot of work with Mister Edgum and the previous general manager. Um, I was at the forefront of thinking that first impressions are everything. And as you come up through Hartley and, uh, come into our LGA, people aren't going to come back unless they see that we're absolutely passionate about giving a, um, I guess, the perfect look, uh, which also costs money. Now, we went, we met with Mister Edgerton on several occasions. We met with Alistair Lunn, who I'm sure you're familiar with. We managed to get seventy thousand dollars to start off with, which all went in, um, design, which I thought was, you know, hugely not necessary to be truthful. Um, and then all of a sudden, this has gone since two thousand twenty one. Um, the government changed and we've gotten no more money. But it is absolutely imperative, I support this totally, that we change the look of when you come in and out. From the east, it's disgraceful. It's okay for, you know, something that, um, is not going to sell us. We want something that's going to make people say, let's go to, let's have a look around. Uh, coming in from the western side is not as bad because you leave the, uh, the LGA in Rammeto Flack, which is known as the golden mile, so it's quite neat and tidy. But certainly coming up through the mountains, we need to, uh, do advocacy work constantly to get. And the other thing is we signed a memorandum of understanding. I went to the jail with, um, the general manager and then went to Kirkconnell Prison Farm with, um, the two people, uh, that are, uh, Mister Edgum and also, um, another gentleman in charge of parks and gardens, David Ensign. And, uh, you know, we signed a memorandum of understanding. But I think we need to start being a little bit more clever and get those people back on track. They're doing a great job helping us with tidy towns. They don't do our work, we do our own work in Portland, but they're doing other work around town. So I would recommend in your, uh, notice of motion, could you please add that we sign a new agreement with, um, uh, Kirkconnell Prison Farm and the, uh, jail to get extra people out on the ground coming at a productive season, but it's like it's going to be.
Councillor Marnie?
I'm happy to do that. I think any partnerships we can form are, are very helpful.
So did, um, the minute taker get that? We'll just wait if that's okay? Councillor Goodwin?
Thanks mayor. Um, I was out there a couple of, um, days ago and it looks like the people it looks like the people in that area have forgotten about the grounds and the parks out there are atrocious. Um, the residents who don't live around in Amora Park think that it's Lookout Council that are responsible for it, which we're not. Three times a year to mow Amora Park for the, for the children out there when that's probably all the area that they've got to play in is just ridiculous. The, the, the grounds are nearly up to my knees in grass. But no one can play in that area, so we need to do something about it. I thank councillor Mahoney for bringing this up.
Thank you, councillor Goodwin. Any further debate on this? I'll put it, all those in fa- sorry, a wide reply, sorry councillor Mahoney.
Only very briefly, uh, just if I could ask the staff to look at road maintenance, uh, council contracts through Transport for New South Wales as a, as a, as a tool uh, to building these agreements. And I know I forgot to mention, uh, thank you also to councillor Evangelitis who's brought this issue in front of the, the staff over the last couple of weeks, so.
Thank you, councillor Mahoney. That's the rider reply. I'll put it to you. All those in favour? All those against declare that carried. Thank you. Uh, two point four, councillor Tassus. Would you like to read your recommendation, councillor Tassus, and your commentary, please?
I move a recommendation that council note the management comment.
Do we have a second up?
I'll second it.
Councillor Fredericks? All right. Councillor Tassus?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Uh, is council aware of when the government proposed to do this or was it just the circular was issued?
Uh, through you, general manager, sorry, general manager?
Uh, through you, mayor. It had been flagged for a little while. It took some time though between when it was announced, which I think was around about July, and the guidelines actually coming out, which was only recently.
Yeah, thank you. I'm a bit disappointed with the state government, but also with the council for not being ready to jump on round one because I note that there's six, half the positions are going up at the first part of this year. And traditionally, traineeships and apprenticeships are all begun at the start of the year, generally in late February, March. Um, the fact that we're going to do it in, uh, somewhere in July, uh, the next round's in March and then the, the, um, positions will, start time will be halfway through the year. I think it's just putting everything out of sequence in regards to all apprenticeships. So, and I, I would imagine that it won't be the other six hundred and fifty in July. It'll be sort of some very minor number and we're competing with a hundred and twenty-odd other councils. So to try and get seven positions out of three hundred, where there's a hundred and twenty-odd councils is going to be very hard. And we, we may have missed the vote a little bit in regards to some of those positions. So, um, I'm disappointed for the gov, for the state government because they, either they weren't getting ready to get it all organised because these are things that start at the start of the year. All traineeships and, and that, and businesses put them on at the start of the year. They don't put them on halfway through the year. And the other thing is they're then considering whether they're putting a traineeship or an apprenticeship on at, um, in the middle of the year is when you're, you're doing your financial return. So, and the same thing with the council. So, uh, uh, it's just unfortunate we've missed the first round of funding and, uh, but I'll just, the council note the management comment and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, councillor Tassus. Councillor Fredericks?
Any help we can get to get people upskilled? I see that as a bonus, even if we are late to the party, better late than ever. So I fully support this. If we can get as many in to do apprenticeships or traineeships, that's another set of skills contributing to the community, so.
Thank you, councillor Fredericks. Any further debate? Councillor Mahoney?
Uh, just to thank councillor Tassus for his motion, I do tend to agree with his sentiments. Um, I'm someone who's been very fortunate. I've had a fairly successful career that was rooted in a traineeship through TAFE. And these opportunities present young people a pathway forward. Um, we need to be a big partner in this going forward each year. Um, we need to set ourselves some fairly ambitious targets and it should feature quite strongly in the local emerging economy plan, I expect. So, um, yeah, so look, I support the, uh, the, uh, the, the points, councillor Tassus.
Thank you, councillor Mahoney. Any further debate? Councillor Statham?
Uh, Mayor Coleman, this is, this is a wonderful opportunity. Uh, even though we may be later than we perhaps should be, I think this opportunity, you know, we have to follow this up because at the end of the day, we don't know how long Centennial's going to last. Energy Australia tell us we need to have those opportunities. We cannot miss the opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Statham. Any further debate?
No, put the motion, please.
Um, I need to go back to a rider reply. Can, you've got nothing further to say? Okay. All those in favour? All those against declare that carried. Thank you. Three point one, uh, ordinary meeting of council dates twenty twenty-five. What's the will of the council?
I'll move that, mate.
Thank you, councillor Statham. Do I have a second up? Councillor Mahoney? Do I have any, uh, back to you councillor Statham, would you like to speak? You're right, you're happy with that? Councillor Mahoney? No, I'll put it to you. All those in favour? Declare that carried. Thank you, councillors. Um, councillor representation on council committees. Can I have someone move that we go to committee of the whole if you'd like to discuss this further?
Yeah, I'm happy to move.
Move that? Can I take that? Mahoney? Any further? I'll put that. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried with going to committee of the whole.
Mayor, could you just, for the new council, just explain what you're talking about?
Basically, I, it's, it's an opportunity to have free debate, free discussion. So there's, it's not, um, constrained. Is that how I would, how we could put it? Yes, yeah.
Um, with respect, the code of meeting practice isn't totally put to one side. It's only the, the number of times you speak and the length of the speech, uh, that's relaxed.
Yeah, it's just relaxed. Yeah, thank you. So we'll just go through, through each one if you like, and then if you want to nominate, nominate and we'll keep moving through that way. So if you're all happy with that. So we've got environmental advisory. What council is interested in that? Councillor Ring? Anybody else? Councillor Mahoney? Anybody else? Yes. Uh, yeah, I'll hand it over to the general manager. He can do that if you like. So each director, okay. So environmental advisory is managed by, um, Mr Elwood? I'm probably. So I'll let you go through that. So environmental advisory, do you want to start there and just explain?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, so the environmental advisory committee uh, is the council, uh, committee that, uh, provides advisory to administration and the interface, uh, with community in relation to, uh, general, uh, natural environment and other related, uh, such as, uh, impositions or impacts, uh, on the environment. And that can be the living environment as well because we're talking, uh, pollution elements to an extent. Uh, so for example, uh, in the previous term, the committee has, uh, been involved in issues relating to natural areas management, uh, such as Hassan's Walls, uh, land care related issues, uh, some of the other, uh, bushland and uh, natural assets, uh, elements, as well as, uh, identifying specific issues with some developments, uh, sedimentation control, uh, and those sort of aspects as well. So it has been, uh, very specific in that sense, uh, but that's the general broad tone.
Is that satisfactory councillor Evangelitis? You happy with that?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't need to do it for everyone. Some herself is mandatory.
Okay, that's fine. If you just, if anybody wants to ask, just ask, okay?
I just asked a question before we move from the, um, the actual meeting frequency. Is that determined by the council tonight or by the terms of reference of the committees?
Oh, the general manager can answer that.
I'll, I'll be straight. I, I think like all the other committees, I enjoy and I'll be putting my hands up for sports advisory. But I think it's important we meet two monthly for sports advisory. But I also think it's pretty important we meet two monthly for environmental advisory committee, given the the role it plays in our function as an organisation.
Thank you, councillor Mahoney. Uh, general manager?
Uh, through you, mayor. Included in the business paper is the previous term meeting day and frequency. So I think all, probably the easiest way to do it is if council would like any change to that, council can make a change and we'll note that in the minutes. So I'll take it that at the moment it's proposed each two months for environmental advisory.
Is that right, councillor Mahoney?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll note that. All right. So no further nominees for that one? Okay. Moving on, strategic review committee, which was formerly operations committee. So councillor Ring, councillor Mahoney, anybody else? It has four. Councillor Smith? Anybody else?
I probably need an explanation of what that committee is.
Yeah, so Mr Echkin, you'd like to explain what it is?
Through you, Mayor Coleman. The, the strategic review committee, as mentioned, is the former operations committee. It's really focused on the high-level strategic objectives of the council with respect to infrastructure, infrastructure planning and the policies related to it. So for example, um, uh, we've just developed a, an emissions reduction strategy in draft. And it's proposed to take that to the first meeting of the strategic review committee so that they can go through it, figure out how council might abate its emissions over the coming five to ten years, what strategies we might implement to do that, how much funding we might apply to those sorts of projects, et cetera. So it really looks at the high-level objectives of the council in respect to infrastructure and related projects and how it, Main Street revitalisation could be one that goes through to it, uh, integrated water cycle management from MATS area. Um, it's really kept at that very high level.
Hang on, councillor. So councillor Ring, you had your hand up?
Yeah, um, I like these meetings on a monthly basis. Um, and as discussed when we were talking in information, so I think the, the meetings can be focused on different aspects on a monthly, on a turnaround to minimise the workload on the staff. Um, and when we do talk about the terms of reference, although having it at the strategic level, there's still other avenues in there to look at performance review of certain programmes.
Count, uh, thank you councillor Ring. General manager?
Uh, through you, mayor. Just, just to note, we have a proposed minimum number of councillors for each committee. It's no issue and we can amend the terms of reference if we don't have, um, the same number as proposed. For example, with this committee at the moment, we have three nominations. It says four. Um, unless directors have an issue with, with any of that, um, we, we can simply change the terms of reference. And, and, and just to note too, that, um, if councillor doesn't nominate, all councillors are still welcome to come to these, um, internal committee meetings.
I'm happy to nominate if no one else wishes to. I'm happy to nominate for that one if no one else wishes to. That's all. That's fine. Okay, if there's no, is anybody else interested in that? No? Okay. Traffic advisory, local committee? Yep, excellent. Councillor Fredericks? Anybody else? I'm happy to attend that if no one else wants to. Oh, I know, but some, I would like to give other people an opportunity. Councillor Statham, would you like to go on it? No?
I don't, mayor, um.
Councillor Ring? Okay. Uh, sports advisory committee, councillor Goodwin, councillor Mahoney, councillor Smith? There's three there? Anybody else? Who? Emerging economy committee? Ooh, excellent. Councillor Goodwin, councillor Evangelitis, councillor Ring, councillor Fredericks and councillor Mahoney. Fantastic.
Um, councillor Coleman, with respect to the frequency of the meetings, can we hold that over until we have the first meeting?
Sure.
Thank you.
Happy to get that? We can talk about it then. Anybody further commentary on that? No? Community development? State, councillor Statham, it's a good one to go on. Councillor Mahoney? You don't want to go on? Councillor Fredericks? Youth advisory? Councillor Fredericks, councillor Goodwin? Excellent. Anybody else for that? No? Crime prevention? Councillor Fredericks, councillor Evangelitis? Very good. Finance committee? Yes. That's a good question. General manager?
Uh, through you, mayor. I would say the, the finance committee would generally look at procurement-related matters.
Okay, excellent. Does that satisfy? Yep. Um, we're up to finance committee. Finance committee, councillor Evangelitis, councillor Ring, councillor Mahoney? Anybody else? No? Okay, so we've got those. Women's advisory committee? Councillor Evangelitis? And myself? Yeah. Anybody else? Who? Okay, those two. Are, uh, currently the deputy mayor's already on it? Seven Valleys Tourism Committee? Councillor Statham, councillor Evangelitis, councillor Smith, councillor Mahoney? Sorry, slow it down, sorry. We'll go back, we'll slow, yeah, so. Did you get those four? So we might do that again. I was a bit too quick. Councillor Statham, Evangelitis, Smith and Mahoney. Sorry, did you get that? Apologise. All right, thanks. Okay, we don't need to do the working parties. They can be done by MIMO, I believe. Yep, I'm fine with that. We move over to the next page. Uh, Arts Out West Committee? No? One more, sorry, councillor Mahoney?
Just what we're doing with the working parties.
Yeah, actually you might need to explain. Can we get that explained?
Do you want to move that till the end?
No, you, you need to, you want to explain what we're doing with the working parties, please?
Um, through you, mayor. Uh, uh, we are, I am open to the, the will of the council with regard to the working parties. However, I had, um, suggested in the business paper report that councillor representation for working groups can be determined at a later date when these are established. That I, uh, they don't necessarily need a resolution of council to, to set the membership. However, if council does want to set the membership by resolution, that's fine too.
What is the will of the council in regards to this issue?
Well, as per the recommendation in the paper.
Sorry, councillor?
As per the recommendation in the paper, wait until they're established.
Okay, you're happy with that?
Um. Yeah.
Councillor Tassus, you said something? Sorry, did I miss?
Okay, so you're right, you're both on. Yeah, you're right on, you're right on the same page. Okay, excellent. Um, Arts Out West Committee? I understand that the mayor and the deputy mayor attend so. Okay, but they can be alternative can be. Okay, all right. New South Wales Royal Fire Service Senior Management, mayor and, yes, councillor Statham? Happy with that? Yep, fantastic. Uh, Royal Fire Service Lithgow District Liaison Committee? Would someone, you went on to the other one? Yeah, excellent. Councillor Statham? Lithgow Information and Neighbourhood Centre, councillor Goodwin and councillor Fredericks?
I think the next one's done, I believe.
Yes.
Right. The joint organisation is done. Energy Australia Lithgow Region Community Consultative Committee? Councillor Smith and an alternative and councillor Ring? Clarence Cole Western Community Consultative Committee? Councillor Fredericks? Western Region Community Consultative Committee? Yes, that'd be, that's a good question. Can I please, do we have the response, councillor? No? Do I want to answer that? Western Region Community Consultative Committee? Do we know? No, no. It's not familiar to me, councillor Statham. Can we get, can we remove that and get advice on it? You can speak through it? Okay, Mr Echkin?
Generally, these community, through, through you, Mayor Coleman, uh, generally these community consultative committees run either by a big business or, or a major employer in the area, predominantly a mine or a power station in Lithgow's, um, capacity. Uh, generally they deal with community benefit initiatives and projects and major changes that are happening with the mines so that they can run those changes through us and information providing mechanism or consultative and collaboration mechanism. Um, so generally, yeah, it just deals with those sorts of mines-related projects in that particular area.
Are you interested, councillor Statham? Yeah, okay. So councillor Statham, someone else would like to be on that? That's fine, I'll go there. I have that one. I can do that one as well. That's fine, I'll go there, like, have that one, I can do that one as well. Early Mine Community Consultative Committee. Yeah, councillor Ring?
Yeah.
Cent- Centennial Call Western Community Consultative Committee. Also, does someone else want to be on that as well? Councillor Smith, you happy with that? Collin Valley Call Community Committee. No, that one? I'm happy to go on it and then I'll delegate it. Invincible Coal Mine Community Committee, mayor and alternative, does someone else like to be on that? Yep, Stephen, councillor Ring. Noon San and Kailan Project Community Consultative Committee, I've never seen that as well, what?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, okay, cool. Is anybody, councillor Marnie? S Bank Rail Heritage Centre Wogan Valley Wilderness Railway Committee. Anybody interested? Councillor Marnie? Where are we inquiry consultative committee? I'm happy to go on that unless you want to. I've done it before, I'm happy to do that. Glen Museum at Portland, councillor Statham. Anybody else? I'm happy to go as an alternative. New South Wales Public Libraries Association. Uh councillor Ring. Alright, that's all done. We need a procedure motion to go back in, I believe. Councillor, can I have someone move that we go back in?
Maybe we go back into normal meeting.
Right, right, norm- normal meeting, can, and can I have a second after that? Oh, second, thank you councillor Fredericks, I'll put that, all those in favour, all those against, we're back in normal meeting. I now have a recommendation which includes all those councillors, I believe.
Okay, I need to check if we're happy, if the council's happy with point two, which is determine whether the Lithgow Crime Prevention Committee, minimum two is to be held at the commencement of every second community development meeting, we need to, I need to flag that with you.
I'm pretty sure that's what we agreed on during that information session, it worked out to coincide with the other committee, so it helped.
Everybody happy with that? Councillor Statham, you'd like to comment on that?
Yes, Mayor Coleman, how do we, how are you going to propose who votes? Like normally, two people can vote, the mayor can vote at all times at every meeting.
If you're, if we've changed the term of reference, then everybody can vote. So if we've got four people on a certain committee, then we'll change the term of reference that they're all voting delegates.
Thank you.
Is that satisfactory?
Question, please, Mayor. And it's understood by those people who have nominated in order to maintain quorums, if you've nominated, that you, your intention is to attend. Um obviously, if we can't attend, that happens from time to time, but we've just got to be aware that that could impact on the meeting having a quorum.
That's correct, thank you councillor Marnie. Going back to you councillor Statham, yes, everybody who's nominated will be a voting delegate, we'll change the terms of reference, if you're happy with that? Okay, so is there anything further that we need to raise? No? Alright, so I need someone to actually move the recommendation, please, councillor Ring? Thank you councillor Statham. Councillor Ring, did you want to speak to it?
No.
You're happy not to? Okay, councillor Statham, you're happy with it? Right, is there any opposition to it? No? I'll put it to you, all those in favour, all those against, declare that carried, thank you. Okay, item three point three, request for information councillor Tassus, what's the will of the council?
Uh point of order, Mayor.
Yes, councillor Tassus.
Mayor, you would be aware that I forwarded you a email last week? And on the basis of that email, I'm asking you to withdraw this report.
I'm happy to move it into confidential, if that suffices.
No, I want you to withdraw it.
I'm not withdrawing it councillor Tassus.
Then I'll declare that there is a code of conduct complaint on this matter. And I would now formally ask you to withdraw it on that basis.
Alright, on that basis, then I'll withdraw it.
Thank you.
Alright, well, we withdraw it on that basis.
Sorry, Mayor, um as a councillor, I need to understand what's just happened in front of me. Um I'm, I just need a clarification of of what's just occurred, please.
Certainly councillor Marnie, councillor Tassus has raised an issue in regards to item three point three. On the basis of what he has raised, the matter's been withdrawn, I think it's best for the council to deal with this in another matter. Thank you. Uh we'll move on to three point four. Uh Leap two thousand and twenty five to two thousand and twenty six action plan.
I'd like to move an amendment, please.
Yes, councillor Ring.
Insert a new point two and then renumber two to three and three to four. Uh the new point is that in relation to the proposed cadetship, internship and graduate programmes and the proposed capacity building and transition management training programme. A report we received by the Emerging Economy Committee detailing those programmes prior to any expenditures being incurred in relation to them.
Thank you councillor Ring, do you have a second, though?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Statham, councillor Ring.
Um I'm not necessarily opposed to them, but we've got very limited information. Currently, nearly half the budget for LEAP is in salaries. Neither of these items are actions in the LEAP document, there are forty short-term actions, which, that's zero to five years, these not included. I want to make sure that moving forward, reallocating resources to where they're really needed. There might be legitimate reasons for these, or whether or not they're needed now, or further in the future, I don't know. But I think, given we're a new council, um LEAP, the economic development of this community is a very complex issue. And I think we need to be cautious moving forward so we don't make inappropriate decisions without councils having all the information.
Thank you councillor Ring, councillor Statham?
Look, I think it's a very valued report, I think it's something that we're all interested in. Um it's something that's very time-consuming for the staff. Uh and I think it's also something that we're very anxious to know how successful it's going to be. One of the comments that I really value is we want to be sure that mining towns continue to have highly skilled, well-paid jobs and growth industries that will lock in their economic security long in the future. So young people have the opportunity to remain in our town where they need to grow up and would like to stay with their families. So I think there's lots of positives in that report.
Thank you councillor Statham, any further debate on this?
Yes, Mayor.
Councillor Tassus?
Uh yes, Mayor, um I think this is slightly changed to what's in the book.
Yeah, councillor Ring moved it with an amendment, so would you like to wait until it's?
No, I just want to know what number six, what's proposed by number six, because number four in the book, I'm not in, I'm not in support of.
Okay, are you gonna move an amendment?
Well, can I just confirm what what the, a lease of the former assembly in building, the delegate, the general manager? But what lease are we talking about? Are we talking about for the adaptive skills hub or some other lease?
Um, Mr Edgum?
Through you, Mayor Coleman, that is indeed correct, uh it's for the trial of the adaptive skills hub until uh approximately September next year.
And then I'll be speaking against the motion, particularly number six. I don't believe we should be putting adaptive skills hub in that building. That building, um council was, uh has been making rent for uh over twenty years, I think it's the whole process. Um and I don't think it's appropriate to uh have this um go in there, I think there's plenty of other places within the community, in the main street, uh elsewhere. And I think it's up to the council to find another spot and not take up a full building, that's going to restrict this council from um possibly going and ex- getting the same rent that we got off Centrelink over that twenty years, and I think it's important that we don't give up that. And we, uh there certainly be other places that could be adapted uh for a couple of years for this um adaptive skills hub, so I'm not in support of point six, I don't know whether the mover wants to take it out. Uh and the second one to take it out, but I certainly can't support the skills hub going in there, it's such a big building, it's um it could, should be going back into some sort of rental situation to support the council.
Thank you councillor Tassus.
May I ask a question?
Please, councillor Statham?
Uh through you to the general manager, uh have you, you've got somebody else in mind to take over that lease in the, in the Centrelink building, um rather than it be taken up with something that may or may not get through in a latter motion?
Councillor, thank you councillor Statham, general manager or through to Mr Edgum, who would like to respond?
Uh through you, Mayor. I I did send some information to to councillors, we there, there are um other interested parties in the, for for the Centrelink building, but we may be able to negotiate for the, the adaptive skills hub to be in place uh whilst we work through that, um. And just to note too, the adaptive hills, skills hub will be paying a commercial market rent for the portion of the building that is being used, and there's other potential uses for uh staff accommodation as well, so, um that's why there's the uh change to point six was to allow me to work through that and 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 a report to be provided to the January ordinary meeting, um I'll just hand to Mr Edgum.
Thank you Ross, and through you, Mayor Coleman, I just want to make the point, um and I don't have a feeling in the way the council will vote as it wishes. Um but the Adaptive Skills Hub is um a grant-funded programme through the Australian Government. It's uh valued at over a million dollars. Um and it seeks to lift the adaptive capacity of our workforce locally, which is one of the two key projects for the LEAP in the early days. Uh we have searched high and low in the early days to find an alternative location, but the schools are very keen to offer a program that none of them currently offer, which details the programming of drones and those sorts of things, and they're all really excited about that. Um we haven't been able to find a viable alternative to date. There probably is a viable alternative, but within the timeframes of the grant, we haven't been able to find one. So unfortunately, if the council chooses to uh not allow the temporary and fixed term use of the Centrelink building for this purpose, uh noting as well that a commercial rent will be paid, as Ross mentioned, uh it's likely that we will need to hand back that money.
Uh hang on, we'll just.
I just wanted to ask two questions if I'm not.
Hey, firstly, I'll come to councillor Fredericks, because she did, and then I'll come back, I promise. Councillor Fredericks?
Um so from this, we're doing a co-contribution of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per financial year. Is that including building costs? Cause I see that our amount's staying the same, but the federal government grant is significantly reduced.
Um through you, general manager, through Mr Edgum, can you answer that councillor Fredericks' questions, please?
So it's just phased over the to- total life of the program. There is an element in twenty four, twenty five, and there is an element in twenty twenty six. Um the the money that's being leveraged is about one dollar for ev- one dollar of Lithgow Council's economic transition money for every two dollars Australian government money, it's just so happens that the phasing of the program sees our component expended earlier than the federal government's component, but it's all, in in sum, uh it's about a two to one leveraging of council's own money.
Thank you councillor Fredericks and Mr Edgum, sorry councillor Statham, I know you had, and I'll come to you in a minute.
Look, I think it's rather confusing, I do agree with councillor Tassus. Why are we voting on point six, uh point four, when we don't know whether the adaptive skills um hub is going to be successful or not?
Yeah.
We've got the university down there struggling and using, losing millions and millions and millions of dollars. We can't see that close, so, you know, I I I.
Hang on, I'll come back to councillor Ring, maybe he'll adjust his motion, which you seconded. Councillor Ring?
Well, no, I'm not happy to adjust it, um I I'm happy with it is. Uh I wanted to clarify through you with administration that the adaptive skills hub only uses a portion of the building, which does not, I believe, preclude commercial use being in there as well, is that correct?
Mr Edgum?
Not at this time, no, however, there are plans for other similar programs, which haven't been brought forward for the council, so no decisions have been made related to the university study hub to co-locate those facilities and turn it into a bit of an educational hub.
That's not really relevant at the moment.
Uh no, no, uh to your question, no, there's nothing stopping the alternative use of the building in other.
And through you, Mayor, to the general manager, um what's the normal time period for negotiating your commercial rent for a long-term lease?
Mr General Manager?
Oh, through you, Mayor, it can vary, of course, but usually it would be at least three months to negotiate the the terms of the new agreement. And and then there's um also, um depending, it can, it completely depends on the type of business or organisation that takes up a lease, that that can be up up to six months or longer.
One more question if I'm right, WSU have accepted that they're not in a position to actually host this program. Or their space is not suitable.
Is that a statement or is that a question?
That's a question, I just want to clarify that.
Clarify that, Mr.
Uh that is correct, given the nature of the program being offered, the facility's not quite suitable, uh and the teachers have also uh advised us that it makes it easier for them if they offer the the program in a purpose-built and purpose-run facility that's secure for their students. Uh and we're also housing a quarter of a million dollars of science and engineering-related equipment in there, so it makes sense from our own perspective to make sure that's secure and insured insured under our own policies as well.
Thank you, Mr Edgum, I'm gonna come to councillor Evangelitis, cause I know that you want to say something there.
Yeah, I I would suggest that we hang on to this building, um we were fortunate enough to have Centrelink um pay a great rent for a long time, um the the private sector isn't going to pay anywhere near that rent. I would suggest they'll be offering thirty percent less than what Centrelink were paying. It's a government-level building, um it's been, it's been kept very, very well. And I just want to see it used for the benefit of our town. Um if we're getting market rent by the project, I don't, I don't see how um we should, I don't think we should let it slip. This is um an important building for us. And um, yeah, that's it.
Alright, any further debate on that? Councillor Tassus?
Can I just clarify, because I'm not going to vote for that one to six. If six isn't dropped, then you're not going to get up on anything. It could be, could be a mood not to go ahead with the whole lot. So is it possible to get to drop number six? And make it a matter arising, so that we can change that one to five go through and number six becomes a matter arising, and then in which case you can choose it separately.
Councillor Ring?
Uh Mayor, I believe under the code of meeting practice, we can do with individual items. So I'm happy to deal with the first five, then number six.
So is that foreshadowed?
No, no, it's just, no.
You're happy with foreshadowed?
No, no, it's, we did it at the local government conference, you can either deal with each, whether there's a multiple uh recommendations, you can deal with them individually. Or as a group.
Okay, so if we deal with one to five, so you're moving one to five as a recommendation?
Yeah, that that's, one, sorry, one of the five we vote on a block and six can be voted as a separate item, and be debated as a separate item.
I'll just get some clarification, is that general manager? Okay, so we'll move, we'll do one to five, and then we'll come back to six, is the councillor that's happy with that? Now you're gonna move that? Do I have a second, uh councillor Ring? Do you want to debate that councillor Tassus? No? No councillor Ring? No? Any further debate? No? I'll put it to you, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, we'll come back to point six, where's the council stand on that?
I'd like to move it.
You're gonna move it? Do I have a second, uh? Councillor Goodwin, councillor Ring, would you like to speak to that?
Um I think it'd be very unfortunate to not allow the general managers to pursue potential leases with this building. Given that those leases could take ten to twelve months, possibly longer, to be concluded, and the fact that they could be cohabited with this space. We're not going to get someone to take this entire building on in one hit. Centrelink was great, those days have gone. This building will have to become a multi-purpose building, uh there are potentials, uh particularly with overcrowding of staff in this building, that council may also want to use part of that space down there as well. So I think we need to have our options open moving forward. This does not commit us to anything, this just allows the general manager to actually move the process forward.
Thank you councillor Ring, councillor Goodwin?
Yeah, I agree with councillor Ring, I think we need to um move forward on it straight away, I don't want to lose the funding. that um that we might get from the government to start this um educational facility up. I think it'll be great for our, our young people, um and it'd be really good for Lithgow to, to see something go in there straight away and we start earning something on it.
Thank you councillor Goodwin. Any further debate? Councillor Maney and then councillor Tassus.
Uh question, um once Centrelink vacated the building, what, how long was the building vacant for?
Uh, General Manager or Mr Edgum?
Sorry.
Through, through you Mayor, the, the building um was vacated in April formally, and since then we've had the electoral commission returning offers, of course, being there on a short term lease. The recommendation that's before council now simply allows me to, to delegate, delegates to the general manager to negotiate on all options for the um, for the building and then a report to the January meeting.
Councillor Maney, does that suffice? Councillor Tassus?
I think it may that the recommendation uh and what the general manager just said doesn't give him that at all. This arises out of one to five, which talks about the hub. It doesn't talk about anything else. So we need to change the recommendation if it's going to reflect the general manager's comment that he's going to look at all options. Uh some that were expressed by uh councillor Statham over there in regards to some other people that were looking at it. I can't believe in this town at the moment that we can't find a suitable location other than the Centrelink building for this hub. I mean, if you look at the, the university uh building uh down the road here, um I think we get, what you, see the fifty cents or a dollar is the rent every year that the council gets off that. And I'm surprised that they can't come to the party and provide exactly this particular hub in their building, given the fact that the whole thing was like a ten or either eight or ten million dollar grant from the federal government when they went in on the lease that they're on. So, you know, here we are going to lose, you know, anywhere from three figures of, uh six figures of rent uh for this for a couple of years when we can't house them somewhere else. So, uh you know, to me, Centrelink's gone, we put someone else in here, but this is, this is a, a short term thing. Uh a hub that should be going to some educational building. I'm surprised that we cannot find a suitable empty building or the university down here repaying the favour where, where, I think it's a dollar, I think, down there. Is it a dollar? I think it's a, it's, it's a single-figure thing, uh and we, and they won't let us in. I mean, that's just absolutely outrageous for us to lose all that rent there. Uh so, you know, we can get, they can, they can get the rent down there and, and we can get the rent here. Goodness me, uh we, it's an educational facility that's going to house an educational facility. Centrelink should be open to the market and it, uh apparently we've got some offers on the table, so we should be looking at that. That's not incumbent in that, that's arising out of the LEAP program. Now, either change the recommendation to reflect that you're looking at all options, or that, you know, I, I can't support the recommendation.
Councillor Ring, are you happy to review your recommendation?
I, I, I'm happy to adopt it, that um if the general manager prepares a report and that looks at all options, inclusive of leasing.
So we need to, so you're changing it then? That's the seconder councillor Goodwin, are you happy with that? Hang on, sorry, did you wanna stop? Okay, so are you changing that?
Yeah, um, um I'll throw up some words, the general manager might wanna help, that um, that the general manager is is delegated to provide a report to councils, the general ordinary, ordinary councillor meeting on future use options of the Centrelink building, including the Adaptive Skills Hub and all leasing options.
Okay, does that, councillor Goodwin, are you happy with that as the seconder? I, I think, General Manager, did you wanna say something?
Uh through you, Mayor. Just to clarify, we, we, the, the purpose of this resolution um is, we, we do need a definite decision from council on the um Adaptive Skills Hub, um which is just being confirmed by the director. Um but as I've mentioned in a memo, there are other interested parties and negotiations would continue with those, and I may be able to provide more details in a report to the January meeting.
Mr Edgum, and before we vote on this, I'm gonna have it read out again. Go.
Thank you, Mayor Coleman. Um just to be perfectly clear, uh we do have a grant acquittal date, which is coming up in, I think, February or March, where we have to be in there and providing this for students at the start of next calendar year. So as Ross mentioned, it does need a decision as soon as possible. But I just wanna um I'm not disagreeing with any of the comments made, uh and I don't wanna enter the debate, but there were just a couple of comments there about WSU not wanting to help us with this program, and that's really not the case. WSU is uh has reached out with open arms to help us with all aspects of this. It's just a case of it being infeasible. It's not possible to provide this program in their facility. Um so I just wanna correct there being any assumption that WSU's against the council or not in support of this program, cause that's not the case. They're very much in support of it.
I'm delighted to hear that.
Thank you, Count, uh Mr Edgum. Can we just get that up on the screen before we vote on anything, cause it's been, it's gone around the world a couple of times? So is it-
Question, Mayor.
Yes, councillor Tassus.
Can we take out at the January ordinary meeting because um it may be that we have to convene in late December and make a decision. Is it possible to get a report in the next uh three weeks?
Um Mr councillor, yeah, that's not a bad idea. Councillor Tassus, uh General Manager or Mr Edgum, where are we at?
Just gotta read it, the, the um, i- if you wouldn't mind me.
Yes.
I thought we, I thought I'd retained the endorsement use of the former Centrelink building in there, which we've already voted on.
No, we moved that number, that was in point six, my understanding.
No, that wasn't point six. Point six is what we're discussing now. We've already voted on using the, the, the building.
No, it's been taken out councillor Ring. Yep.
And did we, on?
We, we've voted on one to four, and now we're discussing the suddenly, one to five, sorry, we're now discussing point six, which is regards to the Centrelink building.
As a mover of it, I didn't agree to take out the item on endorsement use of the former Centrelink building.
So it got moved to number six?
It's got moved, councillor Ring.
No, actually it's not.
Well, that previous motion's already gone up and through, so if you wanna, you'll have to do a rescission, otherwise now we're talking about number six. So can we have a look at where we're at? The general manager prepares a report for January twenty twenty five council meeting detailing the lease options and current opportunities for the old Centrelink building for council consideration. Are we happy with that?
Uh with the possibility of possibly having an earlier meeting like December if applicable.
If that, Mr Edgum, are you able to do that? Well, it might have to be general. Is that going to affect the grant funding?
We have meetings with carpenters to start, potentially depending on the resolution of council tomorrow. But because the meeting needs to be, the room, the whole room needs to be split up and these works take many, many weeks, particularly over the Christmas break, where trades stop working. And as I said, we've got to acquit the next stage of this grant in February or March, so I, I'm, I don't like pressuring the council, and that's not what I'm trying to do, but we really do need a decision sooner rather than later.
So if an extraordinary meeting needs to be called, we can call it.
No.
No?
That is, we, we, we weren't aware of that.
No.
We weren't told that. Now you're telling me the carpenters are moving in tomorrow?
S- subject to the will of the council. If the council chooses not to go ahead with this, we can stop all works and we won't move forward.
Uh well, you can't.
So you can't put the cart before the horse, so we have a recommendation in front of us.
Then it's pointless moving this motion at all. It has to go ahead tomorrow. It does, it does.
I'm not gonna second that.
Okay. Okay, so that-
I kinda feel like we're, we're getting bullied into making a decision like that.
Well, I wasn't aware of that.
Can I ask a question, Mayor Coleman?
Yeah, let's withdraw, which withdrawal, the whole motion's been withdrawn.
Can I, can I ask a question? We've already lost a two million dollar federal grant. If we hand this money back, we're gonna get more little black stars against us, which is gonna make us harder moving forward to get funding.
Yep.
I move another recommendation.
Yes, thank you councillor Tassus.
The council endorsed the use of the former Centrelink building to facilitate the Adaptive Skills Hub project.
Seconder?
Seconder.
Um councillor Goodwin got in first. Um do we don't even more debate on that councillor Tassus? Yeah, councillor Goodwin, did you like to speak? Hang on, councillor Goodwin, you seconded, you don't listen. Councillor Maney?
That I haven't spoken this matter. We talked earlier, well, I'm sorry, that's, that's what I'm here for. Everyone else has had a, a fair comment.
Councillor Maney?
So we are, as I understand it, receiving market rent. We talked about the importance of aligning training programs with with educational years and their timing. Uh we've talked about the fact that we want a skilled workforce coming forward in our community. Uh councillor Coleman, uh sorry councillor Statham, my apologies, spoke about the importance of young people wanting to establish a pathway. At the moment, we have a hourglass shaped population where we hollow out in the young adults because they're moving somewhere else. Um I mean councillor Ring rightly points that we, funding bodies look at risks with their funding partners. We've got to demonstrate because there's a lot of money coming down the line potentially to us as a region. We've got to demonstrate that we can manage and execute programs and projects. And for me, I am not comfortable with delaying the start, in the start button on this. Um so, thank you.
Hang on, hang on. So can we have, so the previous, the pre- previous recommendation was withdrawn. Can we please put up what we're now voting on? Right, so what was number four on the book? Okay.
Endorse the use of the former Centrelink building to facilitate the Adaptive Skills Hub project.
And councillor Tassus has moved that, and councillor Goodwin has seconded. Do you want to write a reply councillor Tassus? Does anybody wanna speak? No? All right, I'll put that. All those in favor? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Item three point five, draft Lithgow Future Fund Policy. What's the will of the council?
I'd like to move it with an amendment if I may.
Thank you councillor Ring. Is there a seconder? I will wait for your amendment.
Uh all I wanna do is amend point three to read that council placed a draft future Lithgow Fund Policy on public exhibition until the end of January twenty twenty five.
Is there a seconder? Councillor Maney? Councillor Ring?
Consistency in how councils deal with issues is important. And placing this policy on exhibition until the end of January is consistent on item three point eleven, draft policy categorization of land as farmland for rating. Um and I think it's really critical to do it.
Thank you councillor Ring. Councillor Maney?
Uh as a principle, when we're putting, as councillor Ring's spoken to, matters of significant consequence out into the community, the Christmas period should basically be taken out of the twenty eight days. So when we get to mid-December, people are going on leave, they're not back until mid-January. We need to give people an adequate period to contemplate some, some big items that we're putting out there in front of people. It's not an optimum time to be doing public consultation from here on in. So I, I'm happy to concur with councillor Ring on that.
Thank you councillor Maney. Any further debate on this topic? Councillor Statham?
Uh yes, Mayor Coleman, I do believe what councillor Maney has suggested. Um any time between now and the end of January, people are away or they're busy, or they've got relatives, there's always something occurring. I think to be transparent to the community and not get any bad press, uh that it would be wiser to leave this after the festive season, well and truly.
Absolutely. Thank you councillor Statham. Any further debate on this topic? Write a reply councillor Ring?
Uh no, there was, I'm gonna put a couple of other points, but I'll do all the more of the documents on uh public exhibition.
Thank you councillor Ring. I'll put that to you. All those in favor? All those against, declare that carried. Three point six.
I'd like to move, move an amendment if I could.
Lead communications and engagement strategy. Councillor Ring, you're moving something with an amendment?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to change the recommendation to read that a decision on the LEAP engagement plan is, is deferred until January twenty twenty five, meeting in order to provide council's adequate time to review this document and make comment and recommendations for change prior to it going on public exhibition.
Is there a seconder for that? Councillor Maney?
Yep.
Councillor Ring?
As I said previously, this is a new council. The LEAP process and program is very complex, there's a lot of moving parts. Uh we have a number of new councillors. It says in here it's, they wanted to do some review. I mean, if this document wasn't ready to come to us, and it shouldn't be here basically, the document that comes to us to put in public exhibition should be the final. Not a document that needs to go back to the staff for retweaking or rewording. It should be the file that goes out. Being a strategic document, this also comes in our domain as councillors. This is our role. I think moving this or deferring decision until January gives every council an opportunity to get up to speed, raise questions with the staff, and ask if any changes can be made. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ring. Councillor Maney?
Just a question, please, Mayor.
Yes.
Is there a time criticality of, around this needing to be endorsed tonight?
Can, um through the general manager to Mr Edgum?
Thank you, Mayor Coleman. I'm really glad that that question was asked, cause it gives me the opportunity to raise the fact that uh one of our staff um has still developed a very lengthy, well not lengthy, sorry, a high-quality presentation for the council, that unfortunately we weren't able to deliver at the time because of time constraints and the fact that other matters went uh much longer than anticipated. So um we can defer this matter. There's no time criticality, time criticality to it whatsoever. Um and I'm sure that uh the staff will be very happy to present that information to the council and give you a greater understanding of what's contained within the policy.
Thank you councillor Maney. Is continuing to speak? Yep.
Uh no, just thank you to Mr Edgum.
Thank you. Do I have any further debate on this topic or this item? Write a reply councillor Ring?
No write a reply, there's no opposition.
Wonderful. Um thank you. I'll put you. All those in favor? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Item three point seven.
Move the recommendation with a point three.
Thank you councillor Tassus. It's special rates variation vitamin resale tender. What is your point three councillor Tassus?
That the council advertised the uh nominated streets that are going to receive a um a resale, part of the resale program, in other words, the confidential vitamin resale tender evaluation sheet, which discloses what streets are and what the cost is, is going to be based on council's um social media page and also the weekly newsletter.
Thank you councillor Tassus. Uh councillor Maney, you'd like to second that?
Uh yes, and again, in keeping with-
I'll go back to councillor Tassus.
Oh, sorry.
I won't have to speak to it, just that I'd be happy to see that there's quite a list of streets there that are going to get done. It'd be nice for the residents to know that their streets are getting done.
Thank you councillor Tassus. Councillor Maney, you did second it. Can you, would you like to speak now, please?
Yes, very briefly, again to concur with councillor Tassus. I think it's important from our accountability and building confidence in our community around these programs. I think having a, a table of the areas that are going to receive the work, I think that's useful.
Thank you councillor Maney. Any further debate on this topic?
Uh there is, there is just a, a question, Mayor. I noticed in the list that uh a number of the streets uh were from uh developers um doing projects. In other words, the developer did the works originally, and here we are down the track reselling the roads. I just wonder whether there's an issue where the developers are not doing the roads to uh along tivity spec- specification, and all of a sudden uh a few years down the track, all of a sudden the council seems to be coming back and fixing up the developers' streets. I, I just wonder whether that's an issue from the, the council. In other words, that, you know, we, we, they're paying their rates, but they're getting their streets fixed um within a short period of time of the development opening.
Thank you councillor Tassus. Mr Edgum, I'm assuming, for you?
Thank you councillor Tassus and Mayor Coleman. That is a fantastic- Thank you councillor Tassus and mayor Coleman, that is a fantastic topic for discussion for the strategic review committee. I'm looking forward to that because it is a big issue for Lithgow council. Uh, we're in the process of developing a new set of engineering guidelines to apply to development so that we're bringing in best practice to new subdivisions as they go ahead and we're applying those standards to new subdivisions as they are. So we're improving our process of, of inspection so that we're keeping developers to those standards as well, which, um, is one matter that we're, um, continuing through mid-stage at the moment, so. Uh, I'm looking forward to having that conversation, I can table a report so that we can have that conversation.
Thank you councillor Tassus, any further debate on this?
No, but I applaud, um, Mr Edgcombe, uh, expressing his, uh, I guess, his, uh, business acumen, uh, to say that what, uh, we are going to have is that we're going to be able to seek some better work if in fact it's needed, because I'm sure that I've spoken to you on many occasions for work that we've paid highly for and perhaps haven't been done quite up to, or it appears they haven't been done up to expectation.
Thank you councillor Stapleton, yeah, there's no opposition, I'll put that, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you. Item three point eight, financial statements for the year ended thirty.
Move the recommendation.
Thank you councillor.
With a, with an addition to point one mayor.
Yes councillor Tassus, your audition? Is there a seconder? I'll second it, councillor Frederick, thank you.
Yes, in addition to number one, I've just given it to the secretaries. Uh, the, the council received the audited financial statements for the year ended thirty third June twenty four, pursuant to section four one nine of the local government act nineteen ninety three with a request that the council's auditors, including the financial statements, information with respect to council resolution twenty one dash one one nine, a property lease with the Lithgow Golf Club Limited, A C N double O one O three seven eight two three, in particular to clauses three, rent, four, outgoing and utilities, five, maintenance contribution, twelve, and Anx C, repair and maintenance obligations, Anx D, maintenance of golf course, and clause seventeen, insurances of the lease, meeting with all relevant Australian accounting standard guidelines in number two and number three as they are, thank you.
Thank you councillor Tassus, so you've moved that, would you like to speak to it further?
Uh, thank you mayor, as councillors would be aware, in twenty twenty one, the council gave the council, and the, the council, uh, leased out the, um, uh, the park out at Morenguru Fields, which is the eighteen hole championship golf course. Councils would be aware, or the new councillors may not be, that the, uh, there's something like over two hundred thousand dollars in maintenance that the council provides. We have anywhere from three or more workers doing the eighteen hole championship golf course. Uh, the, um, there's meant to be something like six thousand dollars rent on that building and the course that's paid to the council, I'm not sure that that comes back to the council. But what I'm looking for here is that it be accounted for in our books as a, a separate line item so that the, we know exactly what, as part of the agreement, uh, we're providing for that business of the Lithgow Golf Club. We don't provide any other sort of subsidies like that to any other local business in town. And if you look at the main street, there are many businesses that are struggling. And here we are, um, you know, we should be nominating the fact that we're giving this sort of money uh, to a, a licensed business, um, running a club. Um, happy to have a golf course, but we need to really work out and put it out there that we're funding this, uh, organisation. In fact, in the last fifteen years, we've spent over, we've provided some over three million dollars to that organisation to have an eighteen hole golf course, and we really need to work out whether we do or we don't, but we certainly need to account it for it in our books. And that's all this is asking for, is that in our financial statements, our auditors under the accounting guidelines, uh, have nominated this as part of their accounting standards. And that's all I'm looking for, so I move the recommendation, thank you.
Thank you councillor Tassus. We need to set that up on the screen as soon as we can, but councillor Frederick, you did second it.
It's all about being transparent. The more open and honest we are, the, less the community can complain that they didn't know. So, I fully support it.
Thank you councillor Frederick, do I have any further debate on this?
Yeah, I'd like to move an amendment.
Yes, what would you like to move?
I'd like to move that, uh, item one goes back to the original.
So you're moving the original recommendation as an amendment?
Yes.
Is there a seconder? Councillor Goodwin? Thank you, all right, now we've got an amendment, so you'd like to speak to that councillor Ring?
Uh, the audit has done their report. Uh, I don't, I don't fully know the accounting standards, whether or not this can be changed, you can't respectfully change it, the books have been done. Uh, if, if councillor Tassus wants to bring back a notice of motion requesting a report on the operation of the golf club and its history, fully supportive of it. But I think this is purely about the current audit. The audit officer has signed off and it's gone to the audit office. Um, they've come back, they've set it above board and I'm satisfied with that. Moving forward, if, as I said, if councillor Tassus wants to bring back a notice of motion, he has done in the past on numerous occasions about the golf club, I'm happy for that to come back and for it to be debated in its own right.
Thank you councillor Ring, councillor Goodwin?
Yeah, um, mayor Coleman, I, I think exactly the same, I think, um, if this is in a, um, a past audit, anything new that, uh, comes to council, we may as well debate it then and put it into the, the oncoming audit rather than go back into the past audit, if it's, if it's up, if it's up to scratch.
Thank you councillor Goodwin, any further debate on the amendment? I'll put the amendment, all those in favour of the amendment? Sorry councillor Tassus, you'd like to? Yeah, well, we're just putting duly with the amendment. So I'll deal with the amendment first, all those in favour of the amendment? That's carried, the amendment becomes the motion. Um, I'll put that, unless you wish to write, the amendment became the motion councillor Tassus? Oh, sorry, and those against, I apologise. The motion's carried, sorry, I apologise. All those, okay, so the amendment becomes the motion, all those in favour of the motion, which is now? Yes, write a reply, I apologise, write a reply. Councillor Tassus?
Sorry, this was just a request that the council auditors include in the financial statements. It didn't demand them, it didn't ask them to, it was a request to put it in. It's hard to believe in this accounting standards that we have, that we have a lease with an organisation, a company, an A C N, right, and we're providing all the maintenance for an eighteen hole golf course. We've given them over three million dollars in the last fifteen years, two hundred thousand dollars or more in the last twelve months in this financial period, and there's not one word or accounting standard to say that we've paid that money in our financial statements. Over two hundred thousand dollars, and that's what you're doing at the moment by not asking for it, that was simply the request. It's hard, you know, we, we, don't take the word of an auditor when you look at what happens in society with, with financial accountants and so on and big companies that go under. They, they, they've got all the provisos in, in the financial statements to get themselves out of trouble. This was just a simple request where we need to get them to put something in there that, you know, we are spending over two hundred thousand dollars on that facility. When you look at all the others, um, there's all sorts of amounts and everything, much less than this for all sorts of things. So, this is, if, if we're going to be accountable, we're going to be, as councillor Frederick's indicated, transparent, that needs to go into the books. The fact that we haven't got it in there, the fact that we haven't had it in there for that whole period of fifteen years alarms me. It should alarm anybody that looks at books that we haven't got it in our financial statements. It's not in the open, it's got to be in the books, do you want to agree? You're not going to put it in the books, goodness me.
Thank you councillor Tassus, that's the right reply. The amendment has now become the motion, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? All those against? It's carried. Councillor Tassus has called a division, all those in favour, favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Goodwin, councillor Ring, councillor Smith, councillor Marnie, councillor Coleman. All those against, please raise your hand. Councillor Stapleton, councillor Evangelinas, councillor Fredericks, councillor Tassus. Thank you.
Mayor, could I, yeah, move that we have a break, short break of fifteen minutes, thank you.
Uh, I'm happy to do ten if that's okay, ten minutes, thank you.
I'll second it.
May I go back into the meeting?
All those in favour, all those against declare that carried, sorry, we've done that. Um, okay, we move into item three point ten. So that's the quarter one budget review, what's the will of the council? So I thought, sorry, I apologise, we go back one, three point nine investment report, October twenty twenty four, what is the will of the council? Councillor Fredericks, you're happy to move? Do I, is there a second, please, councillor Ring, councillor Fredericks, she'll have moved it, would you like to speak to it? It's all pretty self-explanatory, thank you, councillor Fredericks, councillor Ring.
I just have a question, Mayor Coleman, just for clarification on externally restricted funds. Apart from the special pur- fruit of the administration, you know, apart from the special purpose grants, are the other items classed as restricted due to legislation as opposed to council resolution?
Through you, Mr Gurney.
Ah, through you, may. All of the externally restricted funds are restricted by either a grant um condition or legislation, so uh it's only the internally restricted funds that are determined by resolution of council.
Thank you, Mr Gurney.
Is that satisfactory, councillor Ring?
More than satisfactory, Mayor Coleman, thank you.
Thank you, any further debate on this item? No, I'll put it, all those in favour, all those against declare that carried, thank you. Item three ten, quarter one budget review, the will of the council.
Yeah, I'll move.
Thank you, councillor Goodwin, second up.
I'll second it.
Councillor Ring, councillor Goodwin.
No, I don't need to say anything on this, I think it might be coming back before council in January.
Thank you, councillor Goodwin, councillor Ring.
Mm.
No, no opposition, I'll put it, all those in favour, all those against declare that carried. Three point eleven, draft policy categorisation of land.
Move the recommendation with a point two.
Thank you, councillor Tassus, your point two.
That council forward an updated letter with the draft characterisation of land as farmland for rating purposes policy. To all of those Lithgow City Council rate payers that previously sent a similar letter to prior to the thirtieth of June twenty four with a request for comment on the draft policy, I've provided that to the secretary.
Thank you, councillor Tassus, is there a second to that?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you, councillor Ring, councillor Tassus.
Thank you, mayor, self-explanatory, uh we did, there was a, just before the thirtieth of June, from memory, a um a letter sent out to uh that caused some concern. And I'd just like that same, this, now that we've drafted that policy, if we can get it out to those people so they can see it, comment on it, we've been fair with it. And I'd be interested in their their comments if they don't comment or if they do, at least we've got some sort of a background to work out where we go with this uh formally making the uh this uh process, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tassus, councillor Ring.
No, I'm happy with the comments that councillor Tassus put forward, put it on exhibition, I'm extremely happy about it being a two-month exhibition.
Thank you, councillor Ring, any further debate, councillor Goodwin?
Sorry, Mayor Coleman, um I just want to ask how many um farmland properties in our LGA, this is going to affect.
Thank you, councillor Goodwin, do I have a, who do I, who's going to answer that, Mr Reed?
Um, so I had a look earlier today, when we raised the rates in July, we had one thousand two hundred and sixty one farmland properties.
Is that satisfying, councillor Goodwin, do you have any further questions, no?
No, councillor, oh no, Miss Neacombe.
No, you are, okay, do I have any further debate on this matter, no?
Can I just ask a question, this, this is going to be, not to increase the rate revenue for council, it's going to balance out, how does this balance out?
Mr Reed, would you like to try and answer that, or would Mr Gurney like to answer that, Mr Reed, someone have a go.
Uh, so I guess just the the basic explanation is, if if we go through the farmland process, whether they're the change to the actual number of people that we have or or sort of impact that category. Um, so the the distribution council will still collect the same amount of rating income, that doesn't increase. It'll just be the distribution between the rating categories, um as more people either come in or or out of the farmland category. If that sort of makes sense.
Does that suffice, councillor Smith?
Um, surely there's winners and losers here. Because it was going to be an increase in rates if the people were taken away from the farmland category.
Councillor Smith, I'll, the general manager would like to make a comment.
Ah, through you, mayor. It's it's really hard to determine at this stage as it would, any impact i- is likely to be marginal. However, it does depend on the number of rate payers who may move out of the farmland category, which is obviously the lower rate to a slightly higher rate. So generally, we aim to maintain each year the the same proportion for all the different rating categories, so that doesn't change. So the impact on rate pays doesn't change, so there there may be some marginal in um impact, you're right, there may be winners and losers. But my my point is it really is likely to be marginal, but it does depend on how many would move out of that category.
Thank you, general manager, thank you, councillor Smith, do I have any further debate on this topic? No, no opposition, I'll put it, all those in favour, all those against declare that carried, thank you. Three point twelve, annual report.
Move the recommendation with a uh in addition a point two.
Your point two, councillor Tassus.
Um, the point two is, I've provided it to the secretaries, that the general manager include in the draft slash final annual report all financial information with respect to council resolution twenty one dash one one nine, a property lease with Lithgow Golf Club Limited, ACN double O one O three seven eight two three.
Thank you, councillor Tassus, do we have a second for that? Councillor Evangelidis, thank you, councillor Tassus.
Uh, thank you, mayor, uh I had a look, a quick look at the report, in fact, I searched for the word golf and I got the Portland Golf Club and we're giving them three thousand dollars for a program that they conducted. Uh, but I can't find any information in regards to this one, where we hold a lease, um. Uh, previous annual reports did indicate uh and did speak of the golf club without any sort of monies. Uh, but now we're not even mentioning the golf club and the fact that the council, uh in its a hundred and one hundred and thirty odd page annual report, uh with all the photographs and everything, and we don't include a picture of a golf club or a course or a green. And we don't include how much money we are providing this organisation, so uh I think it's only appropriate that somewhere in that annual report. And I think it's maybe appropriate where we do have a, uh I think at the back of the annual report where we have contracts, and this is basically a contract from where I sit, where we have contracts with um, you know, the bitumen people, other people and so on. And we're able to um provide that for it, so. Yeah, exactly, three thousand dollars for the Portland course, um but we've got nothing of the over two hundred thousand dollars that we provide um uh with staff and everything in this organisation, so it's only appropriate that that be put in there. And it may be appropriate to put it in under the contracts because this is a contract. Uh, and it's, I think it's over a hundred and fifty grand where they have to be declared in the annual report, so I'd be hopeful that that could be included and I'll move the recommendations out.
Thank you, councillor Tassus, councillor Evangelidis, you second that report?
Um, yeah, no, we have, we can't play favourites in the community, um we have to be transparent and all the information has to be provided. Um, yeah, so I support it.
Thank you, councillor Evangelis, do I have any further debate, councillor Fredericks?
I wouldn't so much say it's debate, but I believe that anywhere that gets money should be included in these reports. So I'm not saying let's just target one person, let's get it all out there, let it all be transparent, of course, keep confidential, items confidential, but let's be transparent, let's show the community that we can do that.
Thank you, councillor Fredericks, do I have any further debate, councillor Ring?
Um, yeah, I have no problem with the amendment, this report's not completed, it does meet the the timeline requirements, but there's time to do it and it's probably adequate to do it or appropriate to do it within this document.
Thank you, councillor Ring, any further debate? I don't have a question on this and I don't have an opposition to this, but I do have a question through you to general manager regarding Brown Gaps Road, it is in the report. But we need an update, can we please advise where Brown's Gap Road is up to, thank you.
Through you, Mayor Coleman, um so we've installed piezometers and inclinometers and a whole bunch of other geotechnical slope monitoring equipment, which is essential if we're going to design a solution that will see the road permanently stable long term for road users. Um, every time it rains, all of those sensors go off indicating movement of the slope. And all of that information is feeding into a holistic design to repair that asset. Uh, we're not expecting that the road will be fully opened or the designs complete um within the next twelve months, but we are expecting the project to complete, be completed within two or three years.
Thank you, Mr Edgcombe, I'll come back to the motion, councillor Tassus, write a reply.
Uh, thank you, if that's the case, can can that information be provided to the public as to where we're going? Because it's just one of those gripes that we're going to have, it's going to be a two or three year gripe, we need to tell them now so that we don't keep getting repeated calls for it.
Absolutely, that's why I asked. So, okay, thank you, that's important, um if there's no further debate, I'll put it, all those in favour, all those against declare that carried, thank you. Three point thirteen, code of conduct statistics, this is just a report, what's the will of the council? Pretty basic.
Move.
I'll second.
Okay, councillor Ring is moving that, councillor Goodwin is seconding that, councillor Ring.
Uh, it's an administrative report, I I I would hope on this turn the council councillors can actually resolve issues without going to the code of conduct uh through mediation with the general manager and all may.
Thank you, councillor Ring, councillor Goodwin?
No, I've got nothing.
You've got nothing, further debate, councillor Lamani?
Um.
Oh, sorry, councillor Tassus, I'll come back to you, councillor Lamani?
Uh, thank you, mayor, um yeah, I couldn't couldn't um agree with councillor Ring anymore, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tassus, councillor Lamani?
I concur with both the councillors and also note the twelve and a half thousand dollar bill we get when we can't do this as a council.
Thank you, councillor Money, I just have a question, um through you, general manager, to Mr Edgcombe, twelve and a half thousand dollars, how many potholes would that be?
It's a really hard question to answer because it depends on where in the LGA you're filling them, um but generally it does about three days' worth of work.
Thank you, Mr Edgcombe, if there's any, no further debate, I'll put that, all those in favour? All those against, we might do that again, all those in favour, all those against, declare that carried, thank you. Three point fourteen.
I'd like to.
What's the will of the council?
Yeah, I'd like to move it with an amendment if I could.
What's the amendment?
Um, that point two reads that a non-site meeting will be organised for staff, councillors and residents.
Thank you, is there a second up? Councillor Lamani, oh, I got, councillor Lamani got his hand up, is that okay? That's fine, okay, we got that amendment? Yep, okay, councillor Ring?
No, it's straightforward, it's been called in, I think with any application that's called in, uh we should go back to what was standard practice when I was first on council, um that they're onsite meetings.
Thank you, councillor Ring, councillor Lamani?
Uh, again, just to reiterate, I'm a fan of the on-tights, if we are calling them in, we just need to have clear understanding of what we're doing with them.
Thank you, councillor Money, do I have any further debate, if not, I'll put it, all those in favour, all those against declare that carried, thank you. Three point fifteen, state of the region report, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty four, we have a recommendation, what's the will of the council?
Yeah, I'll move that.
Councillor Statham's moving it, seconding, was it, was that councillor Fredericks, did I hear you?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, councillor Statham?
I think it's a really extensive report, I think it covers quite a few topics that we sometimes wonder about and get, it's nice to see them in writing, um yeah, I think it's a very good report.
Thank you, councillor Statham, councillor Fredericks?
Not much to add to that.
Thank you, councillor Fredericks, is there any further debate, yes, councillor Lamani, and I'll come to councillor Ring.
Briefly, just appreciate the staff's attempts at trying different things with community conversations around the placemak concept. Um, I'm interested in the whole concept around citizen assemblies and having something outside of the the elected body making decisions, so I appreciate those trying to generate some community conversations there, so thank you for that.
Thank you, councillor Money, councillor Ring?
Uh, just just to state the obvious, this will come back in January for endorsement, which gives us plenty of time to read it. And I appreciate the way it's been put to council to give us that opportunity to go over a number of lengthy documents.
Thank you, councillor Ring, if there's no opposition, I'll put that, all those in favour, all those against, clear that carried. Three point sixteen, amendment to voluntary planning agreements for Strathline Estate, post-exhibition endorsement to execute, there's a lot of e's in that, uh the will of the council.
Yeah, I'll move it.
Thank you, councillor Goodwin, uh do I have a, is there a second up?
I'll second it.
Thank you, councillor Fredericks, councillor Goodwin?
Listen, the consultation and communication part of it says, for me says it all, the amended planning agreements have been agreed with by the current landowners of Strathline Estates, the amended planning agreements have been placed on public ex- exhibition on council's website for a period of twenty eight days in accordance with the statutory requirements and no submissions were received during that period, so I'll have to move.
Thank you, councillor Goodwin, councillor Fredericks?
Again, it's self-explanatory.
Thank you, councillor Fredericks, do I have any further debate on this topic? No, if there's no opposition, I'll put it, all those in favour, all those against declare that carried, thank you, moving on. Three seventeen, we've done, three eighteen, we've done. Three nineteen, uh alcohol-free zone Lithgow, Portland and Luero Way.
I'll move that way.
Thank you, councillor Statham, councillor Goodwin's seconding that, councillor Statham, would you like to speak please?
Oh, I think this is essential, this is a wonderful idea, alcohol-free zones now have become very popular. I think we need them particularly around where there may be not as good a lighting as what we uh could have. But I think it's a sense of security and I think people feel quite safe knowing that there aren't people in and around community events that are held on alcohol-free zones, I think it's a step forward in the right direction, continuing on from previous years.
Thank you, councillor Statham, councillor Goodwin?
Yeah, I think current um up-to-date alcohol-free zones assist both the council and police um enforcing those um those areas for the safety of the community, so on and for it.
Thank you, councillor, any further debate, councillor Ring?
Yeah, my understanding is this is a standard administrative report, comes to council every four years, um. What I would like to point out, particularly for businesses, it does not preclude businesses from applying for old Frisco dining, particularly for alcohol licences, I mean, they're still going to go through a formal process with the licensing board and all the police, but it doesn't exclude it, I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, councillor Ring, any further commentary? If there's no opposition, I'll put that, all those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. Three point twenty, planning agreements and contribution policy.
I'd like to move with an amendment, please, Mayor Coleman.
Yes, councillor Ring?
Uh, I'd like to amend point two to read that council placed the draft future Lithgow fund policy on public exhibition until the end of January twenty twenty five.
Is there a second up, councillor Lamani, councillor Ring?
It's just about ensuring consistency with how we deal with issues, every other issue that has been put up for public exhibition has been extended through the January, I think this one should be done the same.
Thank you, councillor Ring, councillor Lamani?
Uh, councillor Ring covered it.
Okay, is any further speakers on this topic? No, if there's no opposition, I'll put it to you, all those in favour? All those against declare that carried, thank you. Three point two one, Lithgow solid waste and facility landfill gas extraction. There's a recommendation, councillors, what do we wish to do?
I'll move it.
Oh, thank you, um councillor Fredericks, is there a second up, councillor Ring, councillor Fredericks?
Well, it's a opportunity that we can add on to at a later date, so it's worthwhile doing. And if this is the easiest way to do it, let's do it.
Thank you, councillor Fredericks, councillor Ring?
Um, this this project provides both an environmental benefit and eventually it'll provide a financial benefit to the community. But I'm more concerned about the environmental benefit because the methane gases and other gases actually come up through the soil into the atmosphere and this will in fact um remove that issue. Um, the potential use of the the gases or anything in the future um will depend about how it's classed under the waste or energy policies and legislation. This particular activity is exact.
Thank you, councillor Ring, do I have any further commentary on this, councillor Lamani?
Uh, just again to concur about the transfer of methane into carbon dioxide and its reduction and its greenhouse impacts. Um, I just wanted to note in conversations around this, uh a couple of councillors, councillor Ring and yourself, may have spoken about pathways to possibly secondary use. Mayor, have spoken about pathways to possibly secondary use after storage of the the gases. I'd I'd be interested if staff can look at those. I know our waste team, uh, their approach to things has been very focused around innovation and problem solving and, um, I hope this stomach that they can put their minds to whether there's a possibility, whether there's enough volume, um, and it's feasible, but, um, certainly like to look at that as an option along with just flaring the methane.
Thank you, councillor Lamani. I actually would like to ask a question through to the administration about the opportunity in regards to a commercial opportunity moving forward. Will that, is there an opportunity regarding this?
Through to you, Mayor Com. Um, there may be potential opportunities to commercialise the activity at a later date. It won't be through flaring, but, um, certainly through the capture of that, the gas that's extracted. Um, once the infrastructure's in place, being the wells and the um, infrastructure to pull the gas from the landfill, um, there's potential to, yeah, store, um, refine and turn that, um, gas into other, um, useful fuels and that sort of thing.
Thank you, Mr Trapp. Is any further commentary? No? I'll put it to you. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. I have business of great urgency. Do we have any? No? Okay. Then I will move that. I need a recommendation that council resolved to move into closed council to consider the confidential report as listed in the business paper. Can I have someone move that, please? Thank you, councillor Statham.
I'll second it.
Thank you, councillor Fredericks. Uh, we'll move into, uh, put that.
Mayor, before you do, I just wanted to declare that I I won't be sitting through it because I have a, uh, I've tended a conflicts of interest, uh, pecuniary interest. I'm a resident, uh, next to both this, um, Pacific National Site and I've got a son who works for Telus, not here, but he hasn't worked here for five years, but he's in their business in Sydney. And in that case, I'm I'm declaring a, uh, pecuniary interest in both because it may have some effect on my property and it may have some effect in regards to my son, uh, anyway. So, I'm quite happy to, uh, withdraw on both. And, uh, the hermity's flat's the other one, which is neither nor there, so.
Thank you, councillor.
I won't be coming back to the meeting is what I'm getting at as well.
Thank you, councillor Tosses. That's appreciated. But I'll put the motion, all those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. We're now in clouds, closed council. Thank you, councillor Tosses.
Thank you. I will now hand over to the General Manager who will now read the recommendations that have been resolved from CLAUS' Close Council. Thank you, General Manager. Over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Coleman. On item five point one, Strategic Employment Lands Projects, council's resolution is that council endorse actions two and three of these strategic employment lands projects and refer actions one and four to the Emerging Economy Committee for further in-depth discussion. On item five point two, which is request for support, application for a regional university study hub. Council resolved number one, sorry, that council one requests the general manager right to Dr Haran and the Wellness Foundation and formally thank them for furthering this exciting initiative and noting that council looks forward to facilitating their ongoing involvement should the application be successful. Point two, support the application by link under the twenty twenty four Commonwealth Government Regional University Study Hubs program. Point three, note the proposed in-kind and financial contributions set out in the report. Point four, request the general manager liaise with the New South Wales government concerning its ongoing support for a list goes based regional university study hub. And point five, request the general manager to invite the Western Sydney University to formally participate in this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, General Manager. It's now nine fifty four. I'd like to wish all the councillors a merry Christmas and a happy new year. I hope to see you back very in the new year, safe and sound. Thank you.